I call the meeting to order. This is the special town meeting of the town of Lunenburg, November 12th, 7:00 PM. And by the way, if you haven't noticed, it's a full moon, so let's be mindful of that. I declare that the warrant was properly served and a copy is available at the town clerk's office. I declare that there is a quorum, which is 50 voters in this town, so please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Couple things before we get started. There are two surveys tonight. One is called the Old Primary School Ranked Choice Survey. They want you to, we're gonna have a debate and discussion, non-binding, about what to do with that school, but we're also gonna ask you to fill out this survey. That must be turned in tonight. We also have a Stormwater Task Force survey. That you can take home with you or fill it out tonight. They would like that returned by Thanksgiving. I sound very loud to me. How about you guys? It's perfect? Excellent. Okay. If Donna says it's perfect, it's perfect. Somebody did. I wanna go over the ground rules. Please remove your hats when you're indoors in front of the American flag. Please turn off all your noise makers, your cell phones, your beepers, and the like. That includes verbal noise makers that are inappropriate for civil debate. By that I mean booing, hissing, hooting, and hollering. All comments, questions, et cetera, are to be addressed to me, and I will seek an answer for you as necessary from the various boards, committees, and moving parties. Please do not refer to a specific individual by name. Instead, you should refer to the previous speaker, the moving party, the member of the select board, the finance committee, et cetera, and so on. Your comments, your questions should be at the microphones. There's a microphone in each aisle, there's a microphone up front, and if you need my microphone, you're certainly welcome to use it. I will attempt to get to everybody that is in line to speak, but I may take people out of line if I need to speak to or ask questions of the finance committee, town council, the Board of Selectmen, et cetera. If you cannot get to the microphone because you have any disability, somebody can bring the microphone to you, of course. The moving party will speak first to be given adequate time to present the article. Thereafter, speakers should try to keep their comments and questions brief, two minutes. Anyone other than the moving party allowed to speak a second time should really limit their comments and their questions accordingly. And what I'm gonna try to do a little bit tonight, and do more in May to keep us from having all-day meetings, is to try to ask people that if you're making comments and they're all in support of the same article, then maybe we should hear from people that have a differing opinion or have a question. So let's try to think about moving in that direction and getting the meetings a little bit shorter. Amendments to articles, anything that's more than a simple change, must be in writing. There are forms at each one of the microphones, and that amendments must be within the scope of the article, and we'll talk about that if that becomes a problem. Moving the question or cutting off debate must be from the microphone, it must be seconded, and that it's not debatable, there's a two-thirds vote, and I can call that out of order if I think there's just still too many people who are here to speak. Every article or motion will be first put to a voice vote. I will declare if the article or motion has passed or failed. If you disagree with me, seven voters may stand and say out loud, "I doubt," or "I doubt it." And then we will have a hand count. Your cards are for your hand counting, so please hold on to it, don't lose it, and I'm always reminded by the town clerk to turn it in at the end of the day because they're on a tight budget. Reconsideration of a previous vote requires a majority. Either the prevailing or the losing side may raise it, but I will not permit reconsideration if a lot of time has passed and there's been a substantial change in the attendance of the meeting. Guests, people that are not registered to vote in Lunenburg, should be sitting over and near where the chief is sitting, in the front, on my right, your left, and they all have a white tag, and obviously, they're not allowed to vote. This town conducts its business according to town meeting time. I hear they're going to reissue it, but that's the book and the rules that we follow at this point in time. Very similar to Robert's Rules of Order. If you want to accomplish something at a town meeting and you're unsure of the procedure, call me, write to me, email me. I'm in the Yellow Pages under Lawyers. You can find me or anyone here through the Selectmen's office. We want to facilitate the process. We're here to get your input, to have you have a chance to speak. We've had citizen petitions, we had five of them at the May town meeting. We're not here to exclude you because you're not familiar with the process. I'm gonna assume that the body will allow us again, where there are long articles, and there's one on earth removal as well, to post it up on the board, on the screen, rather than read a lot of, everything will be in the warrant, and if you need another warrant, there's one out there. This is an open and posted meeting, so if any of the bodies, the finance committee or the Board of Selectmen, have not yet declared what their vote would be, they will deliberate it at the microphones, and then they will be asked to do a roll call so that you will know how each and every one of them has voted on the articles. So at that point in time, I believe we're ready to begin, so we will have Article One, and that'll be Mr. Alonso.
Okay, there it is. I move that the town vote to transfer to Line Number One principal loans, the sum of $571. Transfer to Line Number Three interest temporary loans, the sum of $19,994.48. Transfer from Line Number Two interest loans, the sum of $15,377. And transfer from Line Number Twenty-Eight Assessors Administration, the sum of $12,000, for a total reduction of $6,811.52, in the amount raised and appropriated for the town's fiscal year 2020 budget under Article Seven of the May Fourth, 2019 Annual Town Meeting.
Is there a second? Selectmen, your recommendation.
Selectmen recommend approval four to nothing.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommended approval six to nothing.
Anyone having questions about Article One? No one at the microphone, we're ready to vote. All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Article Two, Ms. Luck.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $88,222 to the Special Purpose Stabilization Fund.
Is there a second? Selectmen, your recommendation.
Recommend approval four to zero.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval six to zero.
Thank you. This is a stabilization, so it requires two-thirds. No one at the microphone, we're ready to vote. All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Article Three, Mr. McQuade.
I move that the town vote to transfer $9,993 from the Sewer Reserve Capacity Stabilization Fund, and to reduce the appropriation from sewer anticipator receipts by $9,993 to amend the amounts voted to operate the Sewer Enterprise Fund under Article Twelve of the May Fourth, 2019 Annual Town Meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Selectmen, your recommendation.
Board of Selectmen deferred for the presentation.
Thank you. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommended approval six to zero.
Thank you. Finance Director, you're gonna answer questions. Is somebody gonna make a presentation? Okay. Article Three. I think the Selectmen are deferring until they hear the presentation, so there must be a presentation. Nope? Okay. Well, Selectmen, what is your recommendation, then?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Any other debate on Article Three? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Article Four, Mr. Jeffries.
I move for the, that the town vote to transfer $7,513.66 from the Sewer Enterprise retained earnings to the Sewer Reserve Capacity Stabilization Fund.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Selectmen, your recommendation.
Selectmen recommend approval five to zero.
Thank you. Finance?
Finance recommends approval six to zero.
Thank you. Seeing no one at the microphone, I'll declare we're ready to vote. All those in favor of that article, Article Four, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Oh, we're on a roll, folks. Article Five.
Okay.
Ms. Adams.
I move that the town vote to pass over Article Five.
Thank you. Is there a second? Selectmen, your recommendation? On passing over?
We deferred our recommendation.
You deferred your recommendation. Finance Committee, your recommendation.
We deferred.
Okay. Two deferrals. You're gonna tell us why we're passing it over, Ms. Adams or the town manager, Ms. Lemieux? Somebody with a microphone. Go ahead. Nope?
Actually, I don't know how, whether, whether it's a point of order or not, but when we made our recommendation to defer, it was because the union contract was in here as a placeholder. It was not whether or not to pass over that we deferred.
Well, at the moment, you've deferred, so you guys can revote at the, at your microphones, but let's hear from Ms. Lemieux first about why we're passing it over. You're not gonna be able to do that. How about this one that the chief has? Go ahead.
All right. So a town meeting vote is only required when there's an appropriation necessary for, to fund the first year of the collective bargaining agreement, and there are no necessary funds to fund the first year of this agreement. It's actually, the appropriation made at the annual town meeting is, will exceed the amount needed for the first year of the contract. Some additional information about the contract that the Selectmen approved and the union approved, it included a two-and-a-half percent COLA for the first year, two percent the second year, and a two percent for the third year, as well as a increase of about $3,300 in the educational incentive for police officers, and moved the longevity stipend from a flat, from a percentage to a flat stipend.
Questions about this article, passing it over? Yep, hold on. That's what happens when you sit way up front, takes you forever to come down. Should sit closer. That went working? I'm gonna get my exercise.
Hello?
Yep.
Jeff Bingham, 150 Peninsula Drive. Was there anything said about the detail rates?
No. That wasn't part of this agreement. There were no changes. There were no changes to that in the agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Passios.
Yes, I have more a comment than a question. There are at least two members of this board, one of them who is not here this evening, that questions the prudence of town meeting not being able to vote on the first year of a contract. I understand that there is enough money already built into the budget, but it's our feeling, and we're checking through other channels to see if this is appropriate. Thank you.
No one else? Selectmen, we need your recommendation on deferring.
On deferring, roll call vote, Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
Mrs. Adams.
Aye.
Mr. McQuade.
Aye.
Mrs. Luck?
Aye.
An aye for myself, unanimous to pass over.
Pass over. And Finance Committee.
This may be out of order, but would it be appropriate to ask the, the town attorney to weigh in on whether or not?
Sure.
Procedurally, we're, we're following the correct procedure.
I always like it when they ask attorneys questions. Mr. Costa? Did you hear the question?
I'm gonna repeat it because I think I understood it.
Okay.
Whether it would be appropriate or not for these members of the Finance Committee to vote on passing over the article or not, is that correct?
No, it's whether or not the town meeting should be voting on accepting the first year of a new contract.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So I'm gonna defer initially to the town manager. My understanding, where this was a labor matter, is that Labor Council was conferred with, and the Labor Council advised that where the, where the article speaks to funding the contract, and again, where no appropriation is required for the first year, that there's no action required from town meeting. We, we confirm that ourselves, but initially, it's a Labor Council matter, not a general council matter.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Then basically, in terms of passing over, Mr. Passios?
Based on, based on the present information, I still have a question, but aye.
Mr., Mr. Henshaw?
Aye.
Ms. Walton?
Aye.
And aye for myself.
Okay. Anyone else on this article? All those in favor of passing over the article, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously, I think unanimously, close enough to unanimously, all right, it passed by way over two-thirds, and it only required a majority. Article Six, Mr. Alonso.
I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase eminent domain or otherwise that certain property determined to be unique, owned by John E. Saliba and David G. Saliba, being the remaining land of said owners as described in a deed recorded at the Worcester North District Registry of Deeds at Book 4630, page 224. The northern portion thereof, approximately 259.31 acres, including approximately 21,740 square feet in Fitchburg at 994 Northfield Road rear, Lunenburg Assessor Parcel ID 037-0015-00, and Fitchburg Assessor Parcel ID S31-12-A and S31-12-D, meaning and intending to include a parcel of land shown as Parcel A on a plan of land recorded at said registry plan book 514, Plan 14. Said parcel to be annexed thereto, to be acquired by the town under the provisions of Mass. General Law's Chapter Forty, Section 8C, as it may hereafter be amended, and other Massachusetts statutes relating to conservation, to be under the care, custody, and control of the Conservation Commission for conservation and passive recreation purposes. And the southern portion thereof, approximately 58.75 acres at 961 Northfield Road S, Lunenburg Assessor Parcel ID 037-0009-00, meaning and intending to include a parcel of land known as Parcel B on a plan of land recorded at said registry plan book 512, Plan Eight, said parcel to be annexed thereto, to be acquired by the town under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law's Section 45, Section Three, as it may hereafter be amended, and other Massachusetts statutes relating to recreation, to be under the care, custody, and control of the Parks Commission for recreation and parks purposes, and to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds the sum of $782,000 for said purpose, including the payment of all costs incidental or relative thereto, provided, however, that the acquisition of said property shall be contingent upon the town being awarded the maximum eligible grant amounts under the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Local Acquisitions for Natural Diversity, the Land Grant, and Parkland acquisitions and renovations for communities, the Park Grant Program, that the amount borrowed will be reduced by any grant funding received towards the property acquisition, and that the Board of Selectmen be authorized to enter into all agreements and execute any and of all instruments as may be necessary on behalf of said town to effect the, afore said acquisition.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Selectmen, your recommendation.
Board of Selectmen recommend approval four to one with one abstention.
Thank you. And Finance?
Finance Committee recommends approval six to zero.
Okay. And this requires a two-thirds vote, and I believe we're gonna have a presentation by Mr. Kibbe. So come on in, Mr. Kibbe, and I'll get to you if you want to sit down for a minute, and then we'll get back to you, I promise.
Good evening. Brandon Kibbe, 146 Rolling Acres Road, Chairman of the Open Space Committee and also Chairman of the Land Acquisition Committee. I'd like to start this evening by thanking Mr. Alonso for reading that. That was impressive, and apologize for all the words in that, but it's necessary for the purposes of this proposed acquisition. So this evening, I'm here to talk about the Saliba property acquisition, which is located on Northfield Road, on either side of Northfield Road, in the vicinity of Settlers Crossing Golf Course. And I'll start by first going over, a brief overview of our open space and recreation plan, give you an idea of why we would consider doing this, first and foremost. Second, talk a little bit about the actual values that this property in particular has, and why we consider it a priority for acquisition for these purposes. And then also talk a little bit about the finances. I'm sure many of you have questions about that. So first, the open space and recreation plan. The town has had an open space and recreation plan for many decades, actually. Goes back into the 1980s. And that plan has been updated periodically in order to set the priorities for the town's open space and recreation needs. And those plans have, have long guided those acquisitions that the town has. So you may be familiar with many different conservation and recreation areas in town. Most of those were actually acquired in the 60s and 70s, that were town acquisitions for conservation purposes. But the town has often had this open space and recreation plan, and we've most recently started the update in 2018. And the thing I most want to impress upon you this evening is that open space and recreation plan update involved a great deal of public input, not just going around to various town boards and town departments, but also talking to local residents, in particular through surveys. We sent a survey, and many of you may have seen it, went out with all the property tax bills. We had a survey online, on the town website, we have them available at Town Hall, we had them available at the public library, we had a Survey Monkey up, if anybody's familiar with that. The good news is, is that we had, out of those, some 5,000 surveys that were sent out, we got about a 9% response rate. And if you're familiar at all with surveys, you know a 3% response rate is actually pretty good. We got a 9% response rate, which tells me that people care about open space and recreation in town. And in particular, we found out several things about the town's opinions about open space. Number one, people really appreciate the rural atmosphere in town. People actively use our conservation lands and our trails. It was very clear from our residents that people wanted more recreational opportunities, particularly for adults and seniors, and people with limited abilities. And people expressed strong support for voting for town acquisition to help accomplish these goals. With that in mind, I won't go through this slide in detail, but just to show you that it was a very thoughtful process, number one. And number two is to say that we identified a whole series of goals and objectives in that open space and recreation plan, and this acquisition opportunity to the Saliba property actually ticked many of the goals and objectives that were identified in that. Furthermore, the town has identified a series of acquisition priorities that it defined for considering potential acquisitions. Every time a potential town acquisition for conservation or recreation comes up, we apply these six criteria. Is the parcel greater than 50 acres in size? Does it have important habitat resources? Does it provide access and recreation? Are there scenic attributes to the property or provide protection of the rural character? Is it contiguous to other open space resources? Does it support local agricultural viability? Well, the Saliba property, as it came up, supports five out of six of those acquisition priorities. We say that it should meet only a minimum of three, so it meets five out of six, which means it's of critical importance. So, public, the open space plan gives us some, some backing that there is a public mandate for more open space and recreation opportunities in town. This parcel in particular, the Saliba property, meets five out of six of those acquisition criteria, and it's an excellent value to the town. And we'll go through each of these a little bit more in detail. First, in more information about the property itself. The Saliba property is on either side of Northfield Road, on the east side of Settlers Crossing Golf Course, totals 318 acres. The Saliba Brothers purchased this property back in 2003 as a real estate investment. So they acquired it, the most properties of this size in town would typically be enrolled in what they call the Chapter 61 Programs, which offer property tax protection and abatement in, in, in exchange for keeping the property in open space. This property was not put in Chapter 61 specifically because the landowners intended to develop it. 259 acres on the north side of Northfield Road has additional frontage on New West Townsend Road and Howard Street, and it surrounds the Settlers Crossing Golf Course on the east and on the north. A small portion of it, as you heard in, in the motion, actually is incidental land just over the line in Fitchburg. If you're familiar with New West Townsend Road, the town line actually goes up the road, and where the road wags a little along, along the town line, just a little portion of the frontage is, is actually in Fitchburg. It has a tremendous mix of interesting habitat types, and it's a central part of what is considered the largest unfragmented interior forest block that remains unprotected in the town of Lunenburg. And there's an existing trail system. There's a, there's the old road that goes through the middle of it that actually served as a, as a driveway to some residences that are no longer there in the central part of the property, very easy to walk, so people of limited abilities can make their way deep into the property and enjoy being out in, in nature in a very easy and accessible way. And then there's other trails that go all the way up to Howard Street, go out to New West Townsend Road. It's ready-made for a conservation area. On the south side of Northfield Road is about 59 acres. This portion is mostly developable. Currently, it's divided into four residential house lots, and is, which have been on the market, and most recently went through a process that was part of the high-field development that was proposed, which included a massive development that ultimately got denied, that would have connected from Route 13 now by Walmart all the way up to Northfield Road. Would have been a massive development. Currently assessed at $996,900. This is an overview map to give you an idea of the configuration of the property. You can tell in this map that the northerly piece outlined in red here, you see the frontage on New West Townsend Road, you see the frontage on Howard Street here, and the frontage on Northfield Road here, and Stagecoach Road, which is the old, the old road that's now a driveway. There were some residences in the central part of the property here, and the old road actually went all the way up to Howard Street, and that's all trail networks now. The south side on the, which is outlined in pink, I'm gonna try not to shoot Damon in the eyes here with the laser, is 59 acres, and you can see on this topo map, this white area in here where old agricultural fields, and you can see that's nice and level in there when we think about this, the possibility of potential future development for recreation purposes, keep that area in mind. Here's an aerial photograph, I apologize for the darkness of this, but this shows resources on the, on the property. These areas are wetlands, the blue squigglies represent brooks, so it's the headwaters of several brooks. This is Pearl Hill Brook here, which is actually defined as a cold-water fishery resource, an important aquatic habitat resource. And if you look at statewide important habitat types on the property, you see the property also has important vernal pool areas along with those wetland areas, and this dark green here represents areas of statewide habitat significance. It's just called BiOMAP Core Supporting Landscape, Natural Landscape of Statewide Significance, again, because of that importance for the interior forests that I was discussing earlier. On the south side, you can see none of those habitat resources are there, or at least there's, there's one small potential vernal pool there, but otherwise, the habitat resources are less. This layer here shows you the Nature Conservancy identified areas of importance for climate resiliency. So large forest habitat blocks are important for wildlife habitat, they also happen to be very important for climate resiliency. And, and this is an important designation, actually, for state grants that we applied for, which we'll talk about here in a second. And the other interesting thing about the Saliba property is it offers this, this And the other interesting thing about the Saliba property is it offers this connectivity that connects existing town conservation lands through the Saliba property and up into other town conservation lands in the very northwest corner of town, and into Willard Brook and Pearl Hill State Park, both in Lunenburg here and in Townsend and Fitchburg. So it's an important corridor. One of the things that was listed in the open space and recreation plan were trail corridors. Here's a great example of how we can accomplish that. This project is also opportunistic and proactive. Again, the property's not in Chapter 61, so the town has a right of first refusal here. The town, otherwise, had an opportunity here to negotiate a deal because the owners actually came to the town in February of this year and offered an opportunity to start negotiating about the acquisition of the property. When we first sat down, you know, we were looking at this property, and we went through those maps that we just went through now, and we noticed that the habitat value was most strongly concentrated in the north portion of the property. We were most interested in the north portion of the property for conservation alone. Allowed the south portion to be developed. The landowners, however, were very interested in all or nothing. They wanted to sell the whole property. And so, at that moment, we went to the Parks Commission and asked if the Parks Commission would be interested in the south side because of its developability for the potential for future development for recreational fields, either rectangular fields or some other recreational need. There's no plan currently to develop that property for recreation. It's just intended to be acquired and land-banked for those future needs. After we began the negotiations with the owners, we went to the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Selectmen appointed this Land Acquisition Committee. We had a member of the Board of Selectmen, Open Space Committee, Planning Board, Finance, Conservation Commission, all join this committee in order to work directly with the owners. And we were able to secure a very good deal with the owners, which we'll talk about here in a moment, subject to town meeting approval and the award of state grants, which would purchase the northern 259 acres for conservation purposes and the southerly 59 acres for recreation purposes. And the Land Acquisition Committee facilitated the town application to an award of two state grants. Quick word on the state grants. There are these state grants that are available to help offset municipal acquisitions for conservation and recreation. We applied for these grants in June, and I'm happy to announce that those grants were awarded in September. And we received the maximum amount of the award, $500,000, that will help offset the town's acquisition cost for $400,000 for the conservation land and $100,000 for the parkland. There are other park grants available for the future development of the property, up to $400,000 for the future development of the property. So if and when the town decides we want to acquire or develop the area for the parkland portion of the property, there are funds available for that. It is important to note that we were awarded the maximum amount under those grant programs being 64% of the total cost, but it's important to note that these are reimbursement costs. So you saw in the motion, we had to authorize the full acquisition cost of this, but understand that when we acquire, we will then apply for reimbursement, and the reimbursement comes, and it'll be minus those $500,000 of grant awards. On the value, I mentioned earlier, the assessed value is $996,900. As part of the grant application process, we also had to have the property independently appraised. That independent appraisal came back at $1.11 million. The nice thing about a proactive town acquisition is that we worked with the landowner and negotiated a price. And we negotiated a price of $775,000 for this. Massive bargain sale. And the reason, most people will ask, why would the landowner do that? Well, number one, the landowner has owned the property for a while and has been working to, you know, subdivide the property and is really just kind of looking to get out from under it. But a bargain sale to the town, the difference between what it's worth and what they sell it to us for is a charitable contribution. Whereas if they did that to some other random third party, there would be no charitable contribution. So there's a benefit to them from a tax perspective. So our negotiated price is 22% less than the assessed value and 29% less than the appraised value, and the state grants will further reduce that by an additional $500,000, which means the total cost of the town will be $282,000, which includes additional acquisition costs, closing costs and the like, or $887 per acre. So this gives you an idea of that total budget. Again, they're reimbursement grants, and we would be reimbursed by June 30 of 2020. We have to close in advance of that and actually submit our reimbursement request by June 1 of 2020, which is why we had to come to a special town meeting rather than a regular annual town meeting. The short term, there'll be a small amount of short-term financing to carry this into fiscal year '21, and then the bond service on this would begin in fiscal year '21. And we're expecting that we'd run this for a five-year bond at a rough annual cost of about $60,000 per year. And you can note that the state grants happen to be exactly 64% or the maximum amount that the town is able to get awarded. If anybody here thinks that's a coincidence, we can talk after. Some people will say that Lunenburg has enough conservation land. I'm not sure what that means. I don't know how much conservation land is the right amount of conservation land in town. But I can tell you that the Massachusetts Audubon Society publishes a report periodically, and this is out of the fifth edition for their Losing Ground Report, which talks about how Lunenburg ranks in the state for conservation. And you can see, there are 351 states in the Commonwealth, and you can see where we rank in the state, in the bottom half for various conservation, whether it's the acres protected, the percentage of the town that's protected, how much of the BiOMAP Core Habitat we've protected, how much of the TNC Climate Resilience Lands we've protected. So we're in the bottom half compared to our friends and neighbors in other communities in the Commonwealth. So in summary, this project is strategic, proactive, and cost-effective. Provides critical linkages to existing town resources. Focuses on the most essential resources necessary to achieve these goals, and it's a balanced approach with the conservation and lands that are dedicated for future development for recreation purposes. It's proactive, it's negotiated. If this was a Chapter 61 withdrawal, we would be dealing with a 120-day timeline, and we'd be forced to match a developer's negotiated purchase and sale contract. This is not that. And it gives us, because we're able to negotiate it, we're able to negotiate terms and a timeline that work for us. It's also cost-effective, obviously. We negotiated a terrific deal on the property. It's offset by state grants. Bond service will be serviced under our normal operating budget. And the maximum town investment's a really low figure, $282,000. And in terms of long-term cost avoidance, you think of if these properties were developed, and now we have additional needs, municipal needs, either police and fire, children in the school district, you name it, more cost to the town. With it being conservation and recreation lands, those costs are avoided. So the Warren article, that long Warren article that was read a while ago now, authorizes the town to purchase approximately 259 acres for conservation under the care and control of Conservation Commission, and 59 acres for recreation under the care and control of Parks Commission. Authorizes expenditure of up to $782,000 required to close, and it's offset by the receipt of the state grants that we will be reimbursed for after closing, for a total cost of the town for $282,000 or less. And that is all.
Thank you. Stay right there, Mr. Kibbe. We'll see if people have questions, comments. Sir?
Can you hear me? Okay, there we go.
There we go.
Jeremy Mador, 98 Old Farm Road. First, a sincere thank you to our moderator and to our select board for their service and dedication to our community. My property on Old Farm Road borders the south portion of the proposed Saliba property acquisition. As a direct rebutter to the Saliba property, I have been concerned about its eventual use through the various efforts to develop the land. The most recent attempt, which resulted in a zoning committee hearing in February of this year, proposed a shared driveway system that exceeded the allowable length set forth by our local and state regulations. The zoning meeting was, of course, concerned primarily about this issue, along with the wetland consideration and overall impact on the rules that it was asking to be excused from. Now, this same proposal would have also led to the installation of not one but four septic fields so close to the border of the septic systems of my neighborhood, I'm sorry, of my neighbor and I, that it called into question the long-term impact it would have on our properties. Additionally, my backyard experiences a great deal of runoff from that southern portion during the spring due to its downhill location from the now-proposed 59-acre active recreational space. And it causes great concern on how we would experience further issues once the forest floor had been turned into a less porous aggregate and eventually promote watershed toward our property. Now, I'm a firm believer that landowners should be able to develop and improve their property within their allowable use and within the guidelines set forth by the town. However, adverse effects on neighboring properties aren't always taken into consideration, and it can be frustrating trying to protect our own investments while having consideration for others. So, it should come as no surprise that when I heard the proposed 318-acre Saliba property acquisition, it brought a sigh of relief. How wonderful that we won't have to worry about additional runoff and a septic being installed uphill from ours. And for a maximum cost of $282,000 after the grant, who could say no to that? Truth be told, having moved to Lunenburg just a few years ago, I am not as familiar as some of you on how matters of development and operating budgets are handled. However, as a newcomer to this community, it is very clear to me that we are in an eternal struggle between development and conservation. Community growth is championed while simultaneously frowned upon, depending on the topic. Most of us agree that additional taxes are unwelcome, even through the lens of sustaining our public services and ensuring safety for our community. So now I am at odds with my own personal feelings of what is literally happening in my backyard, and I must ask the question which doesn't appear to be asked a whole lot: How does this end? When the dust settles and the purchase is complete, what's next? The walking trails will need maintaining, but I suppose a community day here and there will greatly cover that need. But how about the active recreational space? Ideas for its use will be as diverse as the residents of this town. Some will want a sport complex, while others something more relaxed. We talk about green space for bandstands and farmers' markets. Those all sound like great options. But what about the long-term upkeep of these proposals? Marshall Park could use some attention, and would require significantly less money to repurpose than this project will eventually cost. Connor Lauren's Memorial Playground behind our library needs repair, and it's conveniently located next to another town upkeep issue going by the name of TC Passios, which is also a stone's throw from not one but two other significant town maintenance concerns. The fact is, we don't have it in our budget to maintain our existing buildings, parks, and recreational space. Yet here we are, being asked to earmark funds to embark on a community-enriching project which will result in needing more resources to keep from entering disrepair. In the end, I'm forced to make a decision and put my trust in either my immediate neighbor or my town neighbors. It's a difficult decision, to say the least, but I hope we are able to secure a future for this property so it doesn't become the park that was great at one time. I will vote yes on Article 6, but not without significant reservation.
Thank you. Anyone else on Article 6? I see nowhere at the mic. Oh, coming. Don't be shy. Took you too long to get up.
Ed Littlejohn, 87 Old Farm Road. Excellent presentation. You answered most of my questions. One simple question, I think it was about $60,000 a year it's going to cost us over the next five years out of the budget. Where's that going to come from?
Who's going to answer that question? Town manager? Where are we going to get the money?
It would be built into the maturing debt and interest line item in the operating budget.
I'm sorry, did you say?
It would be built into the maturing debt and interest line item in the operating budget.
And can we make that with a projected increase in income?
As far as our policies go, it meets all our policies as far as keeping within the limits of excludable and non-excludable debt, and the additional $60,000 is within our means.
So the bonds would be within the forecast budget that we can legally increase without having an override?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hello. Dan, I'm Michelle Matthew. We live on Northfield. We bought the property.
It's on Stagecoach Road that we, the corner of Stagecoach.
Get nice and close to the microphone so everybody can hear you. Put it up, it's too low. There you go.
All right, so we live off Northfield and old, well, Stagecoach Road.
Yep.
So, our big issue is, you know, we'd like to have you guys, you know, get the land, because I'd rather have that than a bunch of houses and, you know. But, one concern we have is people going up and down our, you know, Stagecoach Road, which is pretty much our driveway and
And it's an easement.
And our neighbor's driveway, you know, behind us.
It's an easement, and it also, sorry, go ahead.
No, that's fine.
It's an easement, but part of the road belongs to the Hersches and to us, so.
So my main concern is, you know, if, you know, we do proceed, you know, and the land across the street on the, what side is it?
South side of the road.
South side, on the other side. You know, put a parking lot there possibly for people to walk across Northfield to the land behind our property. Well, the only way to get back there right now is down Stagecoach Road, which is pretty much our driveway. So, my concern is people just, you know, walking up and down my driveway, passing my property, and, you know, my privacy, our children's privacy. So that's one of our main concerns. You know, we'd like for this to go through, but there's some issues that we'd like to have taken care of if it does go through for some kind of, you know...
You want to ask Mr. Kibbe about that?
Sure.
Let's do it.
So, as the speaker mentioned, we're discussing the possibility of a parking area on Northfield Road, actually on the south side of Northfield Road, where there was a timber landing that the current owner actually harvested the timber off the south side of the portion of the property in 2012, and that left a very easy area to turn back into an open area for parking. The initial plan was to allow people, of course, the battery is dying, and then go onto the old Stagecoach Road or onto the south side of the property from there to access the land. I did talk with Mrs. Hirsch at the last public site walk, and we did talk about the possibility. And I think there's a very strong and easy way to do it, is to put a trail in on the frontage between old Stagecoach Road and the golf course and to allow people to get up past where the homes are and get into the main part of the property. So I think generally, that's very easy to accomplish, to get past your property. And then, secondly, I think it's important for people of limited ability to still be able to use the old Stagecoach Road, as that right would continue to be available to the town as owners of that property, or any future owner of that property would have rights to access along there. And, you know, our hope would be that you would see the value in having, you know, people who had limited abilities that maybe couldn't be on a woods road but could be on that road, could use that road still to access into the property.
Right. So, on that note, if they're limited, you know, if they're limited, there's not really much other than driving on the road for them to do down there.
Well, as you know, I mean, that driveway goes all the way into the central portion of the property.
Right.
And they can get in and at least get into a ways into the property to enjoy being out there. Most people of limited ability aren't going out for, you know, five miles.
Well, I understand that. It's just a whole privacy thing.
Yep.
I moved here from Westminster. I own the property out there.
Yep.
You know, I moved to Lunenburg.
And of course, if that property was
You know, it's very private. And changing it where people are going up and down my, or our dirt road, you know, our driveway, kind of concerns me. That's one of the main concerns. You know, I don't mind, you know, I'd want, I'd rather have the land be used for this than houses or condos or apartments. than houses or condos or apartments. But, you know, I just want to make sure that my family is not affected greatly by this, you know, this plan.
Sounds like a discussion you need to have with the Conservation Commission, depending upon the vote tonight. All the meetings are public. You're invited to go. You'll get notices, Mr. Kibbe. I'm sure you're going to make sure that, that these two families particularly get notices. Then you should go to the Conservation Commission, Parks and Recreation, and talk about those issues.
Right. I just don't want to propose it when it's too late after it's already, you know, been voted in, or I'm not sure how the whole, I'm not too familiar with the whole town hall--
But tonight is to vote on whether or not to buy it.
Right.
Thumbs up, thumbs down.
So then--
How we're going to use it is something you're going to have to deal with through Conservation.
Now be voted on after also?
Tonight?
No. No, in the future.
The Conservation will be having meetings on how they're going to use the property.
Right. Okay. I just want to make sure, you know, I've seen other towns where things happen and--
No.
No.
All right. Thank you.
I would think it would be based on permissions from the people that are abutting the conservation land, considering that we own part of the land. We just, not the whole road, but part of the road. We just got our land surveyed, so we know this.
They could be based on input from the other owners.
Right. All right.
Okay.
Said my piece. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Carol Hatch, 41 Hilltop Lane. I'd just like a clear idea of what we're talking about when we're talking about recreation because I've heard, you know, sports complexes with soccer fields and I've heard, you know, trail, walking trails and handicap trails. And also I'd like to know about ATVs as well.
Sure. So, the north side of the property is proposed for conservation and passive recreation. Passive recreation is typically defined as, as non-motorized recreation. In Lunenburg, our conservation lands are often, we do have multi-use trails on many of our conservation lands that, that do permit snowmobiles. And so I know there is an existing snowmobile trail on this property on the north side of Northfield Road, and my expectation is that the town will work with the Lunenburg Snow Riders to continue that use. On the south side of the road, recreation means something different. Recreation is active recreation, and that can be conceived of in any sort of imagined, imagined thing you could, you could put your mind to, whether it's playgrounds or fields or bandstands or all the things that were discussed earlier. What I can say is we have 0.0 plans for the future development of that property at this time. Our interest at this point is to acquire it because we have to, because the landowner wanted an all-or-nothing sale. We said, okay, it's not suitable for conservation. There are additional funds that could help offset this for parks purposes. There may be future needs for parks purposes. Let's acquire it and landbank it. We're just going to put it aside. So at this time, the plan is to manage it essentially as conservation land. It's going to remain open. There are existing trails that people could walk on, and that's all. When the time comes, if the time ever comes, and that is an if, if the town ever decides they want to develop this property for recreation purposes, it's available for that. And there will be a massive public input process that would have to drive that because obviously that would cost money and it would affect neighbors, and there would be traffic patterns, and there'd be all kinds of things that we'd have to consider. So that, that would have to be a massive project in and of itself. I heard Marshall Park mentioned by a previous speaker. In the Open Space and Recreation Plan, we identified the redevelopment of Marshall Park as a high priority. This property, in terms of that priority, is, doesn't meet that need. I mean, that, by the time we get to this, I hope I'm old and gray in terms of the development of this property. Our plans really at this moment are buy it and hold it.
Thank you.
Ms. Adams.
Sure. I just had a small question. How much tax revenue is currently generated from the Saliba properties?
I have to defer to Terry for that one.
Currently, the north side pays $9,000 per year, and the south side is also $9,000 per year in tax revenue.
Thank you.
Anything more, Ms. Adams? No? Okay. Sir?
Yes. Jim Todd, 24 Rennie Street. I think your presentation touched on this, but I would just like to ask, if the town doesn't purchase this property, what is your best guess about what's going to be done with it or what's going to happen in that area?
What's your best guess? Because your guess is as good as mine.
Okay.
You know, honestly, the property's been owned and managed as, as an investment for a very long time, and only the peripheral portions of the property have been developed. They've subdivided off several small lots here and there over the number of years, but the bulk of the property has remained undeveloped. And if you're familiar with the property, you walk out on the property, you'll see the property has certain constraints on it, particularly on the north side. There's a fair amount of bedrock that comes out of the property, and people will say, well, that means it's not developable. That's, I firmly do not believe that because I have been elsewhere in Massachusetts where property values are high enough in order to sustain that kind of development. And it's not a matter of, is this property developable? Is it developable now under the current market situation? The answer to that is probably not terribly so, but in the future it will be, and it'll be 10 times more valuable then than it is now. So this opportunity to protect it, for all the reasons we outlined tonight, is really an important opportunity, and it's a proactive one. It's one that comes early in the process and before the property ever carries the value it will eventually carry for development purposes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. You can't do that from your seat. You can get up to the microphone if you want to do it, and it's called move the question, so you're, you're in the right ballpark. There you go.
Faith Beal, Riley Road. I, I move the question.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. That cuts off debate, so we will have a vote, majority vote, on whether or not to cut off debate at this time. All those in favor of cutting off debate, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Debate is cut off. We will now vote on Article Six requires two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article Six, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes by, I think unanimously, but clearly two-thirds. Article Seven. Did I say what? Go ahead, Kathy. Ask me again. Nope, never mind. I think the applause was for you, Mr. Kibbe. Article Seven, Ms. Luck.
I move that the town vote to acquire by gift that certain property determined to be unique, known as and numbered 842 Chase Road Rear, more specifically identified in the assessor's record as parcel 013-0001, and being further described in a deed recorded in the Western North District Registry of Deeds at Book 3611, Page 145. Said property consisting of 23 acres, more or less. Such property to be held in the care, custody, and control of the Conservation Commission for conservation purposes. No appropriation being required therefore.
Is there a second?
Next.
Selectman, your recommendation.
Recommend approval, four to one.
Thank you. Finance?
Finance recommends approval, six to zero.
Okay. Can you tell us about this article? Town manager or Ms. Luck, somebody?
Yes, I can address this.
Thank you.
So at the November 28, 2017 special town meeting, the town voted to accept a deed in lieu of foreclosure to the property known as and numbered as 842 Chase Road Rear. That vote was taken pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 60, Section 77(c), that allows a municipality to accept a conveyance of real property in exchange for treating as paid any outstanding real estate taxes and other municipal charges and liens on the property. Subsequent to that vote, the owner of record of the referenced property notified the town that they instead would like to convey this as a tax-deductible gift to the town, and that the outstanding taxes would be paid by the owner of record in advance. This new vote is required because the authorization given in 2017 was premised on a deed in lieu of foreclosure and forgiveness of taxes per statute. So currently, the taxes on this property is about $7,000, and the owner of record would pay that in advance of, of this vote.
Anyone on Article Seven, please? No one at the microphone, I declare we're ready to vote. All those in favor of Article Seven, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passage unanimously. Article Eight, Mr. McQuade.
I move that the town votes to amend the sewer service area map by adding 189 Cross Road to the Lunenburg Sewer Service Area and Sewer Service Zone, parcel ID 112-58.
Is there a second?
Next.
Selectman, your recommendation.
Board of Selectmen recommends approval, four to zero.
No, we defer.
Oh, we defer, sorry. We deferred--
Deferred, four to zero. All right. And Finance?
Finance Committee deferred for, for presentation.
All righty. I think there was a handout here, folks, if you saw that out in the desk when you first came in. Good time to remind you that you need to do your ranked choice survey before you leave tonight on what to do with the primary school. Ms. Pease, are you going to address this article for us? Good evening.
Okay. My name is Joan Pease. I live at 11 Winter Green Court, and I'm the chairman of the Sewer Commission. The Malletts of 189 Cross Road have come before the Sewer Commission several times, starting in October of 2017. The purpose of their visits was to request a sewer extension from the intersection of Lake View Ave and Cross Road. Now, the area around their property was sewed back in 2016. Before that, there was no sewer area around them. When the sewers were brought down Cross Road, they turned at Pine Grove Road and reemerged at Lake View Ave, turning back onto Cross Road to 214 Cross Road without ever going in front of the Mallett property. The reason they did not go in front of the Mallett property was at the time, the engineering company that was employed by the Sewer Commission, Wright Pierce, believed that this property was capable of supporting a septic system. The Malletts have come before the Sewer Commission and shown us that they have no viable alternative on their property to handle wastewater. They've provided us with perk tests which have failed, and the Board of Health has provided a letter in September of 2019 reviewing the history of the property and the state's involvement that required the Malletts to install something called a tight tank. And for those of you who don't know, a tight tank is a completely closed tank, and every drop of water used within the household has to be pumped out of this tightly closed tank on a regular basis. This is a hardship for them. Per Sewer Bylaw 2.0, the service, sewer service area map may be amended from time to time based on a vote at a town meeting. So that's why we're here tonight, because they've come before us and shown that they cannot use the land with, they can't perk it, no septic systems can be used there. We're here tonight only for the purpose of this extension of the sewer service area. Now, one of our regulations that is pertinent to this is found in our rules and regulations. We have a nice big fat rules and regulations here, and in that you'll have the sewer-- Article Two, yes, Article Two. A guiding principle of Sewer Commission is determine the most effective method of providing service to existing and new developments where alternate onsite solutions are not able to meet local and state health and environmental requirements. So it failed the perk test. The Department of Health has written a letter in favor of this. It is not the intention or goal of the commission to control or enable development. So we're not doing things to either encourage development or discourage development. Now, this section applies only to extensions and connections. It does not apply to the grand plan of where the town puts sewers. That is a different topic. The section that it comes from is the section on extensions only. In addition, the town attorney, Adam Costa, has, and several times in the past, informed the Sewer Commission that we are not a precedent-setting board. And because of that, we are within our legitimate authority to evaluate and make decisions based on the merits of each individual case that comes before us. After the Malletts provided us with all of the data, we determined their need met the two criterias up here, environmental and health, and the Sewer Commission supported the extension, four to one, for this amendment. I'm going to turn the microphone over to the Malletts, who can present to you the data they presented to the Sewer Commission.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Mallett, 189 Cross Road. My wife Pam. What has occurred to us with the tight tank, and Joan, thank you for providing so much of the information. We recently inherited the property after the passing of Pam's parents a couple of years ago, at which point we began this process of trying to have, to get off a tight tank. So all of the audience, for the most part, over the years has been acquainted with having your septic tank pumped. You do that maybe once every two or three years. Maybe it's 1,000, maybe it's 1,500. Our tank is 4,000 gallons. And with just Pam and I there, we pump it every 60 days at a cost of $800. When our parents were alive, it cost us every 40 to 45 days to pump the same tank. So we put that tank in back in 2007, and it's fair to say, from a logical point of view, it is quite a financial burden. And we're expecting probably pumping it next week. It happens that fast. Now, the purpose of all of this, of course, is that we can stay on the property. So we're here tonight before the town to have your vote, to have an extension. As mentioned, there is sewer on both sides of our land within a couple hundred feet either way, but not in front of us. And we don't understand all the dynamics as to why it got overlooked, but the Board of Health knew about this back in 2007, and we'll put up on the board in a second, you know, the letter that came from the Board of Health, as well as the plan that was done by the Ross Associates. They were there to supervise and oversee the, all the perk holes that were done. And the problem with our land, it's a beautiful spot, it's on top of a hill. And so the, all the usable land was perked, and it failed miserably. The land that we couldn't reach or is too steep because the slope is 20 degrees to 25 degrees is impossible to reach. In fact, to stand on the manhole at Pine Grove, that comes in on GPS at about 545 feet above sea level, to be up in my yard where we need to go, that's 648 feet. So it's 100-plus feet of slope to go from my yard and to use that land. It's virtually impossible. Usable spots were, were used, and when you see the slide, this is just the projected area that needs to be covered. That's the width of our property. And by the way, I apologize for that particular slide. The same picture, the same thing should have been done up there. That one has a few extra lines on it, but the service area remains the same. The width of our street is 487 feet or so, and that's the area that needs to have sewer on our property. Now slide, next slide, if, here's the plan by the Ross Associates. They were there, and we did numerous perk holes. And you might think there's more land to be done, but when you're on the property, it's hard to tell on a flat piece of paper how steep is steep. But to say it's not possible to put it on in other locations of the land. And further, the letter from the Board of Health clearly states, especially in the last paragraph, that Title V requires property served by tight tanks to connect to municipal sewer when it becomes available, and it would be the recommendation of this office based on the site conditions and the presence of the tight tank, the applicant be allowed to connect this house to the municipal sewer system if and when possible. Well, that kind, that time came and went a couple of years ago, and we've been trying to do our due diligence to get to this point tonight to have a vote, and it's entirely up to you at this point whether or not our property can be served because to stay on the land is getting harder as we age. And for me, I'm no longer a young pup, and it's, we have to think of-- And for me, I'm no longer a young pup, and it's, we have to think of those next few years as to what we're going to do, and the property is a significant, beautiful location that we don't want to leave. So it's been our goal for several years now to try to make this happen, but it entirely rests upon you as an audience to vote that we actually have an extension to this, to the nearby, available, as mentioned, available and close by septic sewer district. So that's our story to you, it's simple. I don't know if there's any questions on the part of many, Joan covered so many points.
Well, let's find out. Miss?
Apparently, I have to kneel. Paula Bertram, 312 Townsend Harbor Road, what is the acreage of the property?
Well, the paperwork says it's 13.5.
Okay. I want to, while I would support the extension of sewer to serve your home, I understand that the role of the Sewer Commission is not to enable development, but the reality is that there are sometimes unintended consequences with sewer, and we've seen that as a community. And the Whalum area is heavily impacted by sewer. And the development that we're seeing, the 40Bs that we're seeing, Emerald Place, all of that development has occurred simply because of sewer. Without that, that would not have occurred. So my question would be, is it possible to allow an extension simply for the home and not to the remainder of the property?
Good question.
That would be a decision, I think, by the...
Maybe Mr. Raichunis has an answer for that.
Jack Raichunis, Alver Street. I just want to step back from all this discussion because the previous speaker brings up a good point, and I believe every time we've come to this point in this discussion, and it's been numerous times, we go to how the sewer is going to impact this, or how the sewer is going to impact that. Everything we're talking about right now is built upon an error, a mistake. Okay? A mistake was made by an engineering company, don't know the exact year, doesn't matter, made the same mistake as they revised the system. The sewer area goes up Prospect Street, up cross, around Pine, down towards the lake, get those camp spots, back up and down cross a little bit. Why did they leave out this larger piece to begin with? Because people taking notes out there said, "That's a big lot, that will probably perk." There were no soil tests done, there were no percolation tests done, it was the opinion of the people in the field that that's going to perk, so we're not going to give them sewer service. I feel badly for the Malletts. Think if this was your property, and people telling you what you can and cannot do with your property. We're discriminating against these people. We have a system, a protocol, that says if your property can support Title V systems, septic systems, then it should not be sewed. These folks have done their due diligence, they perked the property at their own expense, they went to the Board of Health, who supports this, and still they have to come here, which may or may not be appropriate, and say, "Please, can you just give us what we deserve to have anyway?" I talked to the engineering company, and believe it or not, the professional engineers to agree that they made a mistake, something in and of itself is a coup. And they said, "If we had known this, we would have run the sewer service in front of that lot." They made a mistake. Everything we're talking about is predicated on someone's mistake in the field. We're just asking you to come back and take care of that mistake. Now, one more question that we've had, because this has gone on and on a number of times. Well, what about the people next door? What if they come in and they want sewer? Well, what if they do? There's a protocol in place. If they can provide perk tests that show their property perks, then no, they can't have sewer. If they do their due diligence, as much as these folks have done, then yes. If the sewer is right there, they should be quiet.
Mr. Raichunis, thank you very much, but I was trying to get an answer to a question. So, Ms. Bertram, the question is whether or not, and repeat it.
Okay. So the question is, can the sewer be extended to serve their home rather than the entire 13-acre parcel? I want to follow that up with another question. I happened to be on the Sewer Commission at the time that the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan was done, and I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, there are lots that are bisected by the line, that a portion of the property may be sewed, but the entire parcel may not be eligible to belong to the Sewer Commission. So therefore, rather than incorporating the entire parcel, yes, in fact, this may have been a mistake, but the reality is that by sewer-ing a 13-acre parcel to alleviate a situation may in turn put this town in a very unfortunate situation. The people in Whalum have been incredibly impacted by sewer. I am not against sewer-ing this property in any way. However, I would be opposed to sewer-ing the entire 13-acre parcel. I believe that there has been other properties that are bisected by a sewer line where a portion of the property may be served, but not the entire parcel. Therefore, that makes more sense to me to alleviate the situation the Malletts are unfortunately facing at the current time. To say that the Sewer Commission is not a precedent-setting body, that may in fact be true, but the reality is that if another large parcel comes forward that is not currently in the sewer district and wants to move forward with sewer-ing, and the town votes against it, it is very likely the town will end up in litigation and may or may not prevail. So I would strongly question why we cannot sewer the parcel that is affected to alleviate the situation the Malletts find themselves in, and if in fact, a future owner of the property, because I have heard that there are plans to subdivide the property, I would urge that we look at sewer-ing the property that's affected, but not incorporate the whole 13 acres.
Thank you. Mr. Alonso, and then Ms. Adams.
In speaking directly to the previous speaker's question...
Thank you.
...the, in speaking with town council, and I'll let town council speak as well for anything that I may have an error, is that because this is a sewer area extension, we have the ability to modify the article to include area. That means you can include meets and bounds that can be clearly defined, but nothing as far as only, you can't say things like only one house or only one address. It has to be a meets and bounds amendment that clearly defines the space being added to the service area. And I would defer to town council to make sure that that was indeed correct.
Yes, please.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. So the chairman's statement is correct. The article is an article that proposes a map amendment, so to the extent that the body sees fit to modify or propose an amendment to that proposed map amendment, that would be appropriate and within the four corners and within the scope of what's been published. To otherwise condition the article would be problematic because that's not a function of town meeting, that's a function of the Sewer Commission in determining what connections can and cannot be made, and is dictated in large part by the sewer bylaw and the sewer regulations. But certainly to the extent that there's going to be a modification or an amendment to the article that would adjust the map amendment that's proposed, that would be within the scope.
Ms. Adams?
Okay, I have a couple of questions. It said that the tight tank went in in 2007. When was the home built on the property?
1861, I think.
So prior to 2007, they're, what was there?
That home's been there in the family for 61 years themselves, but the home was built...
No, I know. Was there just a septic that failed, and then the tight tank went in? That's my question.
And an in-law addition was put on at that time, and to do the upgrade to a system, that's what began the whole process of trying to get the land to perk. And this goes back to 2007. So we have been on the tight tank with this burden for quite a few years, 12 years plus, and now septic has come up the street, and yet, sewer, sorry. And it's, we're just beyond our reach.
Okay. And so then my other question, it goes along with what some previous speakers have talked about, is we talked about this topic at our meeting last week, and there's already drawings that show the subdivision of this parcel into proposed lots. And so I think what needs to be discussed tonight, and it's already coming up, is there's one thing to bring sewer to a house that has had a failed septic, and there's yet another to give homeowner the opportunity to develop their parcel beyond what their butters would be allowed to do. So I think that's what we need to iron out here, is I don't think anybody wants to see somebody in town go without septic or sewer, but there's some sort of underlying information here, where in our slides, there's already proposed subdivision of a lot. What happens to all the other large parcels that want sewer for further subdivision? So I think what we're starting to look at as an amendment to bring sewer to just the home is better than bringing it to the parcel, because I just don't think, I guess I'm surprised that in the presentation, we're not talking about the fact that there's already information available about subdivision.
It's true.
So I guess I just want some information there, because we talked about it for over a half hour last week.
It is true that we have thought about that, because partly, having a piece of land, there was two additional lots proposed by an engineer. We're not at that step yet, of course. However, those two lots were quite small, two acres, just for one, two single-family homes. Now, sewer area proposed in slide number one that I showed did not include our entire land. But we are willing to change our deed to say that it would not have, it would be subject to no further development or subdivision, but the purpose of having that additional land, the house is presently too large for Pam and I. It's two homes in one, it's an in-law house, you might say, attached to a house, separated by a common porch. Worked well for someone in our situation, that was, we were caretakers for the parents. Now that this has happened, it is too large for us to stay in the house. So we have adequate land to build a smaller home on our own land, but that's the land that was perked, that failed. So we already know all of our land is failing, and we had a smaller lot, which is adequate footage on Crossroad, to have another lot for sale, a single-family home. And we are willing to put that in deed, that this, that it would not have any future development, so that we can stay on the land. If we fail to sell the land, we can hardly afford to make all these expenses. We've had estimates that could range as high as $100,000, $75,000 to $100,000 at our expense, not the town's. So the entire property is what's failed, not just a section of my house.
Okay, thank you for the additional information, because I think that's what we need to discuss, is a lot of people could further develop their land and find opportunity there if we expand the sewer area, and I don't think we want to set a precedent and allow expansion for development, and hopefully we'll be ironing that out.
Thank you. Sir?
Carl Luck, 50, Sunset Lane. I have been a member of the Sewer Commission since 2006, so was intimately involved in the Comprehensive Wastewater Plan. I think the prior speaker over here was exactly right, and I think we can serve both the true needs of this homeowner, which I hope we can do, and bring sewer and get rid of that tight tank, but I think we can do it in a way that also serves the community's needs and clearly expressed needs when we did the Comprehensive Wastewater Plan. So I would like to make a motion for an amendment to this article, and I'd like to move that we reduce the area of the proposed extension to only the area identified as Lot 3 on the Hannigan Engineering Plan dated May 31, 2019, and voted on by the Sewer Commission on October 29, 2019. That includes the current residents, as indicated by the double-hatched area in the attached modified plan, which I, and I would appreciate being able to show the town that plan and take the opportunity, no matter how this vote goes tonight, to maybe educate people on the history, it's a long history, and sewer is a very important thing that people should understand.
Well, let's not get into the history of sewer, which could take us a long time.
May I make a presentation of my article?
No, I, you may. I want to see, do you have a map that you're going to show them, Mr. Luck?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, we'll come up and get it up on the screen. Oh, yeah. And, Mr. Luck, you read something, I think, so can we have, can Ms. Herrick have that now, so we can see it? Okay. So that's for the moment, an amendment. Was there anybody that seconded that?
Seconded.
Okay, I thought there would be. So now we have an amendment, and we'll have to talk about that. But make your presentation, Mr. Luck.
Okay, I will try to make this quick, but this is an extremely important subject, and I'm glad it's come up. This is, I believe, is exactly, if we look at the sewer service area, which the map that you have is not correct, I think this more accurately reflects what's being requested. I'd like to bring your attention to the, how much the dark yellow, I guess tan, is sewer service area and has been sewed. Everything that is light yellow is outside of the sewer service area. I don't know about a mistake or where that information came from, but that is the result of a very comprehensive plan where the yellow was not recommended as a needs area to be reviewed by the Sewer Commission. This is the drawing of the amendment that I'm proposing. I've used the drawing that you saw earlier, that was originally, that was presented, the Conservation Commission, and what was, what they voted on, that they, we believed was going to be presented tonight, and was on the presentation, as you saw. And the crosshatched area, the double-crossed hatched area is the area with the house. I don't have a pointer. I don't think I have a pointer.
Mr. Kibbe, can you borrow your pointer? Excellent.
Ah, there it is. So it's this area here that was defined by the engineer on the subdivision plan that has not yet been in process. So what I'm proposing is that we bring the sewer up, and we sewer that area, and get rid of the tight tank, and meet the homeowner's needs. The rationale for this is, is it fully supports, you know, fully support extending the sewer service area to take care of this residence. If it was known at the time of the Comprehensive Wastewater Plan, which was finalized in 2010, I certainly, and I believe the prior speaker who was on the commission, would have drawn something very similar to what I now show, because during that planning process, we did draw lines through properties to make sure that the homes could get serviced, but not the rather large parcels would get sewer available to them. In many, in many locations in Lunenburg, only that area required to access the home was, you know, was included in the area, and I'll show you a map that shows you many, many areas. I started counting them, and it's just too many. The proposed amendment is consistent with the strategy that was established regarding the establishment of the sewer service plan. Why is this article so important? And this is, this is really important to understand. Sewers enable residential growth in a community. It doesn't sound that bad on the surface. It also affects the character of a community, the open space, the desirability of the community, the property values. Residential growth, the problem is residential growth increases taxes. That's been studied and analyzed in communities all around us, and it's been shown over and over again that increased residential growth increases the tax rate and the capital fundings. They do not provide enough taxes from their income to cover all of the costs. So tiny increments, but every new residence will increase your tax base and will increase the capital spending. The article is proposed crosses a critical line from providing for existing residents to enabling new subdivisions and denser residential growth. This is the kind of stuff that 40Bs love. 40Bs go in where there's sewer. They don't go in where there's not sewer. In defining the CWMP in this sewer service area, 2006, we started, the town funded, it's so important, the town spent $400,000, because the town was about to go start sewer-ing the entire town and the community, and the people stood up and said, "Whoa, that doesn't sound good." They made this funding, they said, "We want to provide sewer to people who need it, and we don't want to provide it in such a way that it ruins the character of our town and increases our tax base." The Comprehensive Wastewater Plan, you know, was based on 13 criteria, including soil tests, I mean, there were 13 very rigorous things that this agency, $400,000, you get some work. So there were 14 items looked at, septic failures, many, many items. So it was a very rigorous test. There were no mistakes made in that, in that analysis. The needs areas, you know, were then analyzed by the Sewer Commission. So the company looked at the town, and they said, "These are the areas that we think probably have needs, big areas, not lot by lot. These areas we think can survive without sewer." have needs, big areas, not lot by lot. These areas we think can survive without sewer. The Sewer Commission then took the job of going and taking those big areas and trying to draw the lines. Where do the lines go? And they didn't simply just say, okay, that big area gets it, this one doesn't. There was a lot of work, and I spent several nights with many of the commissioners, including Paula. So hundreds of acres were excluded that were in what the, what the company, what the engineers felt was a neat area, but there were hundreds of acres that were excluded, and I'll show you some of those. The importance of the sewer is demanded that any change to sewer service area come to town meeting. That's how important this is. It's not left up to the Sewer Commission. The Sewer Commission's not a precedent-setting board. But the Sewer Commission isn't making this decision, you are. The town is.
Mr. Luck, if you can bring it down to your amendment and this article, rather than the whole history of how we came to the sewer, okay?
So, relevant to this article, on this map, a primary, I got the pointer, a primary to look at is this, this big white area here. This is all within the needs area that the engineers gave us, and they said, this is all needs area. But when we went through, you see all these very large lots, and these very large lots come out onto the sewer area. But the lines are drawn very, right across maybe 50 feet, they're drawn to include the residences, not to include the large, developable lots. Almost any one of these large areas comes out onto a sewer, onto a sewer area. They have a right, it's hard to tell where the property line is because the sewer service area overlays it. But trust me, every one of these large lots comes out onto a sewer line, but they're not in a sewer service area. So they are protected, so to speak. Please consider the long-term implications on this article. This is probably the toughest thing I've ever had to get up here and say, because I want these people to get sewer. I feel bad for them, and I want them to get what they need to stay on that property. But I would not be doing my duty and the oath that I took if I did not speak up and at least try to inform you so that you can make a more informed decision in terms of this article. It's not just about a single thing. It's about, you know, a much larger issue, and it could be used against us in the past if it's passed the way it is. With this amendment, I believe we are very well protected and can move forward, and the residents can get their, you know, get their tight tank.
Mr. Luck, put the map up where, on your proposal, okay? So people can see that area that you've cut out.
I think it's next.
This one. Just leave it right there. Okay? Sir?
Mike Clark, 275 Cross Road. I live down the hill toward Cherry Hill Farm. I don't see, well, this is speaking to the amendment.
Please.
First, this speaker and the last speaker on the conservation land use this argument that development costs the town more than it gives in. So I would imagine, you know, Samuel Page in 1728 would have raised his mask at the next person coming over the town line and said, you know, if you step into Lunenburg, we'll go bankrupt, you know. I don't know where that comes from. It doesn't make any sense, you know, at Lunenburg, you know, we just spent 250-plus million dollars to buy conservation land and left $18,000 in taxes for an empty lot on the table. So I don't agree with those statements. And this isn't a big lot. You know, I don't, I don't see large development coming in, so I'm not sure what we're afraid of there. Myself and all our butters, we have large lots that aren't going to be developed. There's plenty of wildlife in the area. If you looked at that map, all, you know, there's, there's large acreage lots privately owned around there. And we don't walk across other people's private property, so it's not open space. So I think we have plenty of preserved land in that area. The other thing is, it's like a giant percolator. So the more sewer, the better. You know, my neighbor's on a hill, he'll get his tractor stuck in cactails and mud 100 feet up on a hill. You know, there's wetlands all over the place there. So, so me personally, I'm in favor of bringing the sewer in, and I'm not against this person being able to build another house on his lot and, and, you know, offset his, his costs for his retirement and all. So I would vote against the amendment and go back to the article and approve that.
Thank you. Over here?
Yes, I had a question. I think I heard it has to be a meets and bounds description. Would that apply to the amendment as well?
So Town Council and I were talking about that, so he can address that for you.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Moderator. So the map amendment needs to be of sufficient specificity and clarity that the meeting knows and the public generally knows what is being proposed. So that can be done in a number of different ways. It can be done, ideally, with a meets and bounds description, but also understanding that that's not often how it works on the floor of town meeting. It can be done through reference to a map. It's similar to, say, amending a zoning map. Sometimes that's done with very specific meets and bounds descriptions. Other times, a map is put up on the screen and circulated, and it's that map that's referenced. Other times, there are distances, like 500 feet or 200 feet off of a roadway. So this is a reference to a map. It does include, because we have a specific concept plan prepared by an engineer that's referenced, it does include a crosshatched area with a measurement of 500 feet off the street, and it includes an area that is defined as a proposed Lot 3 on which the house is located. So I think that there's sufficient specificity here that nobody is unclear as to what it is that's being proposed in the form of the amendment.
Sorry, it's, Tom Bodkin, 64 Beale Street.
Oh, that's right.
The other question I had was, it seems like these people are willing to basically put a covenant onto their deed, and it looks like they want to just have three lots, which I can appreciate, you know, because to a lot of people, land is kind of one of their only assets that they have. So if they've been paying the mortgage and, you know, they want to reap the benefits of their property, and, but as a town, I understand, we want to guard against a 40B or something of that nature going in. So I guess my question, through you, Tom Moderator, is, is that something legally viable that we can do as a town meeting, is to, whatever, whatever the result is, can we make that a contingency or covenant as part of this process? Or is that something that they would have to do and come back to town meeting? How would that work?
What do you think, Mr. Costa?
Again, through you, Mr. Moderator. So that goes to something that I had alluded to before, but maybe I wasn't clear enough. So the town meeting can't condition the map amendment. That's a role that would be performed by, well, in the first instance, by the bylaw, which dictates who may and who may not connect to sewer. And then, of course, the Sewer Commission performing its function. Certainly, the town meeting can only act upon what's before it. If the landowner was coming before you and indicating that they had a current deed restriction on the property that limited the development, well, then that could inform the body as to what they were voting upon. You'd know that the worst-case scenario would be three potential houses because they would indicate that there's a restriction on record that limits the development to three houses. But what's before you today is what exists today, and what exists today is not a restricted property, it's an unrestricted property. To your last point, could they restrict it and come back? Certainly, that would be a possibility. They could get back onto the warrant, and that would be then, at that time, what's before the body. But that's not what's before you tonight.
And is that something that would have to be of record, or is that something they could execute a document tonight?
I don't think, it's not, it's not within the scope.
It's not within the scope, okay.
Good, thank you. I'll get back to you. Sir?
Dave Mackey, 384 Townsend Harbor Road. I think we saw evidence that the lot here is quite wet. It doesn't perk. It also has a massive slope, so it's limiting the risk of a great development, like has been cited from some of the other people. And I'm, I'm willing to take the Mulets at their word, that if they're going to come here before the town and go through all this effort to get an extension for something that's costing them almost $10,000 a year in expenses, that if they say they're going to build a small house at the bottom of the hill, I'm okay with that. And to go to one of the earlier slides, it said the Sewer District was not here to enable or block development on a lot. And that's what this amendment appears designed to do, is to block. So I would just encourage people to vote no on this amendment and vote yes for the Mulets.
Thank you. Mr. Alonso?
Mr. Moderator, I have a question and then a follow-up depending on the answer. I'd like to ask the Mulets, does this amendment, in what you said, in the financial capabilities of extending the sewer, does this amendment make it financially impossible for you to extend the sewer?
This one right here?
Yes.
Yeah, because I'm going to leave. The point is, if the rest of the land can't be used, I can't sell it. It's not marketable. My house would be marketable, but not the rest of the land. So why have land if I can't use it? So it's a financial hardship, and I would move on. Let, whomever wants to buy it at the highest price, buy it at that point because I can't stay. The house is literally too big for Pam and I.
Well, Ms. Peace, I'll call on you. I promise.
So my, my follow-up question, I'm not, I'm not against the amendment, but I think the current amendment may be too restricted. I'd like to potentially propose a compromise to allow them what they wanted, which is to move to another lot and extend this lot to Lot 2. So extend this amendment to Lot 2 and allow the Mulets to pay for that, to be able to sell a home and create the sewer extension. I think we solve both problems and still limit some of the other concerns that people had about further development. So I think we would be playing fairly to the owners. They'd be able to subdivide it into another lot for them to build a new house on and sewer both of those. And I don't think it would be a great disadvantage to the town as far as opening up for any further development.
Okay, so that's, I promise, I'm going to get there, Ms. Adams. Where's Mr. Luck? So, Mr. Luck, you made a motion that was seconded. So Mr. Alonso was asking, I believe, if you want to accept his amendment, his, a further amendment to include Lot 2 as well.
I tend to say yes, but just from a procedural point of view, would that be the end of it? Or does it have to be a vote on that modification?
No, we still got a lot of, a lot of work to do. We've got people to discuss and voting to take place. The question is, for the moment, do you want to accept his amendment to your amendment to include Lot 2? And then we're going to vote on the amendment as amended.
Okay. Oh, yes, good.
You would.
I think it's a good, I think it's a good suggestion.
Okay, and who seconded? And the person who seconded it will accept that? Okay, good. Okay. So now that'll be a new amendment that we're going to get to, okay? Ms. Adams, right after I recognize Mr. Rogers, because I didn't think the meeting was going to start without him, and thank God he's here. So please.
Right. Mr. Moderator, my name is Dave Rogers. I live at 82 Highland Street, and I hope that this does not prevail. And I'll tell you why. It's really, really basic, insofar as I'm concerned. The parcel ID is 112-58, and that encompasses all of the land. It's a parcel. The real crux of this issue, insofar as I'm concerned, is this. If it was known when the sewer service area was being designated that this land could not perk, then it would be put into the sewer service area. We've heard this evening that a mistake has been made, and everybody makes mistakes, okay? But I really am against further condensing the rights of these individuals because someone arbitrarily said, oh, yeah, sure, that'll be okay. And I strongly feel that this should go down, we should not approve it, and that we should give these people what they want on Lot ID number, parcel ID number 112-58. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Oh, don't feed his ego with that. Ms. Adams?
I guess one thing I wanted to say is that I would like to go back to the original presentation, and there was absolutely no mention of subdivision. And that's what I think I'll say, and I may have an additional question, but that's what bothers me the most right now, is I wish we had heard the actual request at the actual beginning of this conversation.
Are you asking somebody to respond to that?
No.
Okay. Mr. Jeffries?
Mr. Moderator, I move the question.
I don't think we're going to move the question because there's a lot of people still, and I didn't hear anybody seconded anyways. So, no, that's okay. I have the discretion to let people talk. Ms. Peace, I think you needed to.
Please, sir.
Thank you. And I'm not recognizing you because you're not at a microphone. Ms. Peace?
Speaking as a town resident, to put in sewers, and we have extended sewers to other neighborhoods, but when we do that, the financial burden for the sewer is shouldered on the backs of multiple families. The entire cost for this extension will be carried on the shoulders of one family. That is an enormous financial burden. They are between a rock and a hard place, a tight tank, or an extremely expensive to burden themselves. And the way they have found that they can manage this is to, they don't want to leave the property. They want to live on the property that has been in her family for years, to put a small retirement house for themselves on the back. They're willing to put whatever restrictions on the deeds need be. I know that Mr. Costa says that can't happen tonight, but that's how sincere they are. How many of you sitting here in this room could say, oh, I can't use the tight tank anymore, I can't put in a septic system, I can just go out with $100,000, I can just put in a sewer? I couldn't. These are our neighbors. This is a small piece of land. It's not going to be an apartment complex. The slope of this land, if you went out and looked at it, there isn't that much buildable land. You've heard the neighbors testify to the slope of the land. It has failed the perk test. They want to retire on land that has been in their family forever, and they want to be able to flush the toilet.
Thank you. Sir?
Tanner Cole, Massachusetts. A couple of speakers have mentioned that the sewer service map bisects lots. My simple question is, in those cases, have they reduced the frontage of the lot? I couldn't find anywhere on the sewer service map where a large parcel was given a smaller portion thereof and the frontage was reduced.
Anybody answer the question for the gentleman? I thought you might, Mr. Luck.
Mr. Moderator, I'm, nothing's always true, but I'm pretty sure that no lots, no fronts, frontages, because in every case, the issue was the back. The frontages were fairly small. Those big lots, a lot of them have minimum frontage to begin with, but I don't think, I don't think they were. But in a case like this, where there was such a big frontage, that would have been the only way to do this, because otherwise, we would have put 14 acres into the sewer service area. So I, in my heart, I know that we would have drawn something maybe more straight than that, but we would not have left that whole thing in, had we known at the time, which we didn't.
So I think what everybody is really after here is to make this fair to the applicant that's proposing this, and make the measure accurately reflect what was done town-wide. Because as the system was expanded, excuse me, obviously, maps had to be drawn and decisions were made. But I looked over the entire map on GIS, and I couldn't find a single parcel where the service area reduced the frontage of a lot. And if that's the case, I think this amendment goes a little bit too far, because you're targeting a specific individual and saying that because you weren't included originally, now you're subject to a higher standard. And I don't think that's fair. Now, to reduce the area and say, oh, we're only going to do the front seven acres of the lot, as long as it mirrors the spirit of how everybody else in the community was affected, I think that's fair.
Mr. Moderator, if I could clarify, just to bring us back, the amendment, as it now stands, doesn't look like that. It's basically...
Well, which one is the other lot? Well, which one is the other lot that...
But it still reduces the frontage.
Which one is the other lot that was proposed to be added? Which one is Lot 2?
The upper line, the second line that goes from the frontage to the back here. See the corner of the outline, the next line up as it goes all the way through?
The next line up, traveling left horizontally, would be what would be added according to. Right? Okay, hold on. Over on my right.
John Johnson, 357 Lancaster Ave. I just had a couple of questions about the whole...how it works. So the town would be paying for the sewer extension? You would...you're gonna pay for the sewer extension? Okay. So I know other people have done sewer extensions, and did it always have to come before town meeting?
Yes.
No.
They're changing the map.
We're changing the map.
That's the reason. Okay?
Okay. So they're paying the betterments? Are they paying three betterments, because it's three lots? Or are they just paying one betterment, because it's...those are my questions. I just don't understand the...
They're not paying a betterment, because they're paying the entire cost themselves.
I see.
When you pay a betterment, the town has...
Put in...
Not the town, because we have an enterprise fund.
Has put in the extension.
They're going to pay 100%.
Okay. Okay. I just wondered how it all worked. Thank you.
Okay.
Can I just answer a previous speaker's question? The answer is that no, we did not cut frontage. When we...I was on the Sewer Commission at the time when we cut the maps, and the previous speaker is correct. What we did was we incorporated the land surrounding the existing house and drew a line around that land, but I'm not aware that we ever bisected a lot.
Thank you. Sir?
Hi, Dave McDonald, Island Road. I'm on the Sewer Commission as well, and I just got a couple of comments. One is, I don't agree with this at all, this amendment. I do like the idea of what Mr. Alonso said, but after meeting with the Malletts, after knowing the property, and if you read the article, this is where government gets screwed up. We shouldn't even be talking about a lot of this stuff. There's no plans for development. All he wants to do is retire on the property they had in their family. He wants to put another house on the property, but again, if you're gonna go with a 40B, does that gotta go through planning? Does that gotta go through approvals? This isn't gonna happen overnight, guys. He just wants to settle in Lunenburg. So I like to go back to the original article and the way it's written and help the Malletts out. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Luck, I thought you were gonna have a blood pressure problem over there, so if you need to say something, go right ahead, and then we're gonna move the question. You all set?
No, I just want to make sure, because it's so confusing, that the current amendment provides sewer to that whole area, but only two lots and not three. I think that's correct, right? Right. And that's why I accept...
The amendment that you accepted, that Mr. Alonso made, is for the one that you shaded out, and the one that's above it, a horizontal line running from right to left. And if you could see it, it says...I think it says Lot 2. It says Lot 2, but it's kind of... That one, right? That's what is the amendment. Okay, Malletts, this is your property. Final word, then we're gonna vote.
My goal was to be on the upper lot, that little house. We wanted the space in between.
There you go.
And not sell the land until such time in life, when you finally need some money to make it those last few years, you have to sell a piece of land, at which point I won't care. However, to have the first two, great, now I'm gonna be right in the yard of the land in which I'm selling. No, thank you. I wanted the back lot, the top lot. Middle lot stays as a buffer until that day, when I finally need to sell a piece of land to survive.
I want to move the question, and nobody wants to let me. Go ahead, Ms. Adams. I'll do it. I'll do it. I'll do it. Ms. Adams, Mr. McQuaid, and that's it. Go ahead.
Mr. McQuaid here.
Ms. Adams, please.
I think there's a lot going on here, and I feel like there's a lot of thought, and I appreciate Mr. Luck going into sewer and maybe precedent-setting and things like that. We've heard things like, "There are no plans for development," but even building one house is development. I mean, if we could all use our properties in different ways than we're currently allowed, we could all have better outcomes or build second homes. And so I just want to be careful we're not taking a specific situation here and allowing beneficial outcomes to one citizen or a couple of citizens, that we won't allow to everybody who comes forward with ways they can squeeze a little bit out of their property that is changing a rule or changing a map. And so that's...I'm just looking at it very generically in terms of, will we always say yes when somebody's looking to put a house someplace where a house wouldn't perk? I mean, that...a lot of people have land that has unperkable spots, so where do we stop this mentality that somebody's looking for just a little something extra? So I just feel like I would like to pass over the question and then come back when the deed restrictions and the things are there to truly represent what they're looking for from the property. Because I think if what they're looking for is very simple, and it was presented ahead of time, then we could very clearly understand if we say yes, we know what we're saying yes to. Right now, we're just giving sewer to 14 more acres of land, and that can really become anything they want it to become.
Thank you. Sir, final words, please.
Final word. Not to echo the past speaker over here, but this gentleman came to perk that lot, not to perk that subdivision, the subdivision that doesn't even exist, a subdivision that he'd have to come before boards in order to make. So why the heck are we working on speculation that he's gonna make three lots? Or there's gonna be two? Or he could very well find a buyer, and once he has a sewer, he could sell the whole thing? Then the new buyer would have to come in and go through the subdivision parcel part, through the proper boards, to get the okay to do it. Why are you putting this on this guy now? And why is everybody getting so involved in making a 90-item article where it's just a one item? Give him the right to put the sewer to his property, and that's the answer to this question.
Let's vote.
That's all we have to do. So let's move the article on the amendment, yea or nay? Then let's go back to the original and yea or nay?
It's always the tallest guy in the room with the most booming voice. So, the amendment to the article, okay, which would require a majority vote, and we had the pointer up here, is the original hashed out, and then this second parcel. All...and this is, if you're in favor of it, say aye of the amendment. Then we're gonna go back and vote on the entire article. So...you...listen, you need to stand up at the microphone when you want to address things. I'm sorry, but that's procedure, okay? We're recording it. That's the way we have to do it, okay? So, we will count with cards to answer your question, but please, in the future, go to the microphone. We will answer with cards when there's a close vote, and we don't know what the vote is, so we have to do the cards, okay? So, no, we're done. So, all those in favor of the amendment, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Loud and clear. So the amendment has failed. Back to the original article. I'm hoping there's no more debate on that. I think you've beat it to death. Mr. Passios, we have not beat it to death.
We have, but...I'd like to speak as a member of the Board of Health at this moment. As I've said in other meetings, to my recollection, this has never come before, the actual board here in town. The letter you saw up on the board was written by Mr. Giraffi, who is the agent for the Board of Health in Lunenburg, hired to do these inspections and so on and so forth, but the Board of Health itself never debated or made a decision, yea or nay, on this situation. My question would...my question...two questions I have really need to go to the engineer that did the work on the property, and I'm asking if that engineer is here this evening.
We have another question.
Unfortunately, without the engineer here, I can't get a clear answer, but my two questions would be, with a 30-inch high watermark, the only other question I would need is the perk rate that was found. The Board of Health approves alternative systems with 30-inch groundwater levels all the time. There are systems that can be built with 30-inch groundwater. One of the key things is the perk rate. The alternative systems can be as shallow as two feet, and I believe even, in some cases, one foot above groundwater to the base of the system. So I find it hard with alternative systems today that something couldn't be found to be put somewhere on that acreage. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Passios. Board of Selectmen and Finance, we're gonna need your recommendations.
So the board, I would ask if anybody has any comments or discussion before we vote?
I guess I have a new question in that the property owners have never brought forth a septic...a new septic design to the Board of Health. Is that true?
Well, I think the discussion has to be among us. It's not a town meeting discussion.
Okay, so I guess my discussion amongst us is, I'm unclear with the new information from the Board of Health if the property owners have not exhausted their attempt to put in an alternative to their tight tank by way of a engineered septic tank.
Okay.
I've just gotta say that I'm in favor of the article, and we've talked about it long enough, but I think for all the reasons that have been stated, financially, to make this a feasible project for the property owners, I'd be in favor of supporting the article.
Mr. Jeffries?
Yeah, when we had our meeting, I was not in favor of this for the reason of the purposes of development, but I think it's pretty clear tonight, and I'm glad that we did defer this, it's pretty clear tonight that, you know, this process has been rather unfortunate for our fellow neighbors who have come before us to ask us to stop spending $800 every 60 days. I would hope that if I ever needed to come before the town and ask a similar question, that it would not go through this process. And with that, I ask that we make our recommendations so we can vote.
Mrs. Luck, do you have any comment?
My comment is that I believe...I empathize with the residents. I feel that they should be able to connect a sewer, but I don't believe that they should be able to create three parcels. I think that that is not in the best interests of the town.
And just for myself, my own comment is that I think we should, as a town, help them. I also don't think we should give carte blanche to a large property. I think some previous speaker mentioned that, you know, no other lot had left frontage. I would have continued that frontage, but that's the way it would have been treated then, not given the whole property. So for that, I will vote against. Mr. Jeffries, we'll take a vote.
I support this article.
Mrs. Adams?
I do not.
Mr. McQuaid?
For the article.
Mrs. Luck?
Against.
And I am against, so...
Three to two against. Finance?
Okay. First, I'll ask if there's any comment that anyone wants to make, and then we'll go for Okay, then I'm gonna ask for the roll. Mr. Passios?
No. No.
Mrs. Luck?
No.
And yes?
Three to one against.
Three to one against.
Okay. So all those in favor of Article 8, unamended, as original in your warrant, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
It passes. Mrs. Adams?
Article 9, I move that the town vote to amend the Code of Lunenburg, Chapter 70, entitled Salary Administration Plan as follows. The position of lifeguard to be changed from a grade 1 to a grade 3. The position of public access production assistant to be added and assigned grade 9. The position of recreation director to be added and assigned grade 9. The position of building commissioner to be changed from a grade 14 to a grade 16. The position of council on aging director be changed from a grade 11 to a grade 13. And the position of assistant town manager/HR director to be added and assigned grade 16.
And you have a pink handout. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Selectmen, your recommendation?
It was five to zero.
And Finance?
Finance recommends approval, six to zero.
Okay. Can you tell us about this town manager? Ms. Lemieux?
As the slide indicates, this article is to comply with the Salary Administration Bylaw to accept any new positions into the Salary Administration Plan at town meeting with their established grades as approved by the Personnel Committee. The Personnel Committee has already approved the new positions to be added into the grid at the proposed grades, and has already approved the aforementioned existing positions to be reclassified at the proposed grades.
Mr. Jeffries?
Mr. Moderator, I move that we...while I have full confidence in the Personnel Committee and the town manager when it comes to these matters, the article that was presented to the board on which we recommended approval had the council of aging directors' position listed as a grade 14, and the current amendment hasn't listed as a grade 13. I therefore move to amend this article to reflect the council of aging director position to be changed from a grade 11 to a grade 14.
There a second?
Second.
Okay, so that's an amendment. We'll get to that. Anybody else want to discuss this article before we talk about the amendment? Mr. Rogers, go ahead.
82 Highland Street. Could we please have information relating specifically, all of a sudden upgraded, and why they're being upgraded? Because it's my understanding that some of these folks are new to the system, and I just wonder why they're new to the system and were already upgrading their levels of payment. And also, if we could equate this to dollars and cents. I have no idea what a grade 14 is, so if we could quantify that, that would be very helpful for me.
Thank you.
They were out of...
Town manager, you gonna address that? Oh, personnel. Excellent. Go ahead, sir. Introduce yourself.
Scott Chase, 23, Cushing Lane, Chair of the Personnel Committee. To address the speaker's question, we, as a committee, review positions and with their roles and responsibilities, both from an internal equity standpoint. So we look at where similar positions sit within that salary grid. I think the speaker has the pink handout now that shows the different grades and different steps. And in the evaluation, we look at other roles within those grades and to make sure that there's parity within the responsibilities and job scope. So that's why you see certain positions, as they evolve, will have an upgrade if the role, scope, and responsibilities increase. Other reasons for a grade increase would be from market competitive standpoint, right? And I think lifeguard is a particular example around that, where the inability to hire someone at less than minimum wage, which is a grade 1, was preventing...could prevent the town from hiring lifeguards at the town beach. And so that was upgraded to a grade 3.
Miss?
Karen Menard, 672 Page Street, also Chair of the Park Commission. I'm actually wondering if we could make an amendment. The lifeguard going up to grade 3 as of January 1 of 2020 will be under minimum wage. My goal in requesting that lifeguards be upped was to get them to be at least minimum wage, because they go to other places. They go to the Pittsburgh Pool, they go to the Lebonster State Parks. It really is important to me that we're paying our lifeguards, who are responsible for saving our residents' lives, if they're drowning at the beach, be minimum wage. And unless I'm missing something, I don't believe that it is, unless we go up to a grade 4.
So you're making that as an amendment? Did I hear a second?
Second.
I knew that I would. Okay, so we have two amendments so far. One is the lifeguard to go from...excuse me, Ms. Menard, I didn't get it.
From a grade 3 to a grade 4?
Three to four. And Mr. Jeffries was?
For the council of aging director, go from a grade 11 to a grade 14.
Okay, so we've got two amendments we're discussing, that's all. Anybody else want to discuss the article? Sir?
If I could speak to hiring lifeguards in particular, since that's the question. When we advertise positions and we look to recruit for positions, often, you know, most of the time, we look at a step one, but it's not out...
most of the time, we look at a step one, but it's not outside of, of practice to hire someone in higher than step one. And so, there is a mechanism to bring someone in higher than the lowest step in the grade.
Sir?
Chris, 72. Question? 14, so I'm confused.
So, the booklet that we all received in the mail says grade 14. However, this article was amended, and so now it says grade 13. And so, I am moving to turn it back to what was originally mailed out to us and what was originally proposed, which was the grade 14.
When was it amended?
It was part of, it was part of the motion. That was the original motion, which was in the scope of the article.
All right, we're going to take them one at a time, the amendments, okay? Because they're, I think, quite different. So, the First Amendment is Mr. Jeffries' amendment, that the council on aging position be increased to a 14, if I understand that correctly, right, Mr. Jeffries?
That is correct.
Okay, and that requires a majority vote. All those in favor of increasing the council of aging position to a grade 14, please signal by saying aye.
Aye!
Opposed? It passes. The next one is Ms. Menard's on the lifeguard from a three to a four. We're ready to vote. All those in favor of that amendment, please signal by saying aye.
Aye!
Opposed? Passes. So, now the entire article is what is now before you as Article 9, Amendments to the Salary Administration Plan. All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye!
Opposed? Passes. Article 10, Mr. Jeffries?
Sure.
Article passes as amended, right?
Excellent.
Excellent.
Article 10, I move that the town vote to amend the Code of Lunenburg, Chapter 81, entitled Town Meetings, as follows. By deleting from Section 81.3, entitled Closing of the Warrant, the sentence, quote, "All requests for the insertion of subjects in the warrant for the annual town meeting shall be submitted on or before 4:00 p.m. on the 42nd day before the date of the annual town meeting," and substituting the following sentence therefore, "All requests for the insertion of subjects in the warrant for the annual town meeting shall be submitted on or before 4:00 p.m. on the 47th day before the date of the commencement of the annual town meeting."
Is there a second? Selectmen, your recommendation?
Selectmen recommend approval five to zero.
Finance?
Finance Committee, while we found this to be a really good idea, found no direct financial impact.
Thank you. Why are we doing this, Mr. Jeffries?
Sure. The reason why we are proposing this is right now, the current date to turn in all your documents for annual town meetings on a Saturday, and so this then changes it to a weekday to allow to a Tuesday to give everyone the opportunity to actually submit it, I'm sorry, to a Monday, to give everyone the opportunity to actually submit their articles.
Grand idea. All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye!
Opposed? Passes. Article 11, excavations and earth removal.
I move that the town vote to amend the Code of Lunenburg by deleting in its entirety Chapter 140, Article 1, entitled, quote, "Excavations and Earth Removal," unquote, and substituting therefore the language as printed in the special town meeting warrant booklet.
Is there a second? Selectmen, your recommendation?
Selectmen recommend approval four to one.
Thank you. Finance?
Are they deferred?
Deferred, okay. You going to tell us about this, Mr. Bernie?
I am, but first I'm going to propose an amendment. I amend that Section 140, 110B be modified, as shown on the screen, to strike site plan from 1, 2, and 3, and to strike will constitute a sub suitable development end from Section 1, and replace site plan with application in those three sections.
Is there a second? Why are we amending it, Mr. Bernie?
This was a scrivnous error on my part in the submitted article.
Scrivnous error. Error.
Correct.
Mistake.
Correct.
You heard that word, okay. Anybody want to talk about the amendment? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye!
Opposed? You have your amendment. Tell us about the article, Mr. Bernie.
The article is to take Section 140, Clause 1 of the Code of Lunenburg, remove the entirety of the text, which dates back several decades or more, and replace it with what is printed in the warrant, which is a new text, including adding earth fill to the regulated section. So, this section deals with commercial earth removal operations and earth fill operations that will raise the grade 18 inches or by a total tonnage of 500 cubic yards. It increases the threshold for earth removal permits from 10 cubic yards to 500 cubic yards, includes all pertinent exceptions that would be reasonable for septic systems, building permits, et cetera, and gives the planning board the ability to create regulations that would adequately and appropriately regulate the submission and use of said permits.
Anyone have any questions, sir?
Dave Mackey, 384 Townsend Harbor Road. In Section 140-4...
Can you tell us what page you're on?
On page seven at the bottom.
Thank you.
There's exceptions made for installation of a septic and foundation. So, this regulation wouldn't pertain entirely to just commercial entities like mining or something like that. It pertains to the building of even a single family or two-family home that would already comply with the existing zoning requirements. And so, what I don't see in Item B, propose an amendment to include a driveway, because you've got a septic system and a foundation, and there's already a requirement to maintain a 12% grade for a driveway in town. And on many lots, and almost any of the lots today, that you're going to, all the good lots are taken, so you're going to have a slope. And when you look at the requirements for 18 inches, a 10-inch base, a 4-inch asphalt, it gives you about four inches to work with, and you need to do a 10-foot drop, like coming up to the middle of these lines, you need 88 feet of driveway. So, there's quite a bit of fill that could be required just to meet that 12% grade. So, I'd like to promote, propose that amendment, and then I'd...
Okay, so you're going to need to write, you're going to need to write it down, that's okay.
Okay.
You're good. There's a form at the base of that microphone. So, just repeat to me again how you want to phrase it.
In 140-4, Section B?
Yep.
Where it says installation of foundations, I would say and driveways.
Okay, is there a second to that? Okay, there's a second, so that amendment is before us at this moment. Did you have another point, sir, or was that it?
Just the size of the, further up on that page, it's unclear to me. I'm not a, I'm not a lawyer, and I do have land in the property, in the town, and I don't want to go through a lot of expenses to develop it, if I can avoid it. I'm trying to build a house for my family. And the 500 cubic yards sounds like a lot, but it is 25 trucks, 25 dump trucks. Works out to be about $7,500 worth of fill, which, if you've put in a driveway lately, it's not a lot of fill. So, combined, the size, I think, is a bit low for a requirement. I would propose that goes to 1,000.
All right, so your voice is trailing off, and I'm not hearing you.
Could I, could I propose an amendment to 2, that that goes to 1,000 cubic yards from 500? So, if it's filling...
Thank you. I'm trying to find, so write it out on, on the form that's there, okay? And then bring it up here so Ms. Herrick can look at it.
Mr. Moderator, may I ask?
You may.
One clarifying question?
You may, but let me just get him finished first. So, those are the two amendments you want to make.
And then I have a question, which is on 2A, the disturbance of two or more acres of land. Is that any part of a driveway or building that touches the two acres, or is it actually disturbing 80,000 square feet?
That's a question.
It would be the disturbance of 80,000 square feet.
Okay, thank you. Is there a way to clarify that in the statute?
Usually, the disturbance of and acreage count would mean the actual disturbance of that footprint. It would be similar to, earth removal says the disturbance of one acre of land, so the turning of 40,000 square feet of footprint.
Okay.
So, my clarifying question and a comment to the speaker's First Amendment.
Go ahead.
You're talking about increasing the cubic yardage of only fill, not removal?
Of only fill, correct.
And the amendment, I understand, and logically, the progression of adding the driveway, I follow. My concern about the wording of the amendment is Section B specifically refers to foundations as governed by the Building Code in MGL Chapter 143. Driveway permits are locally issued and determined permits. So, my suggestion would be if you wish to make that amendment, perhaps add a second sentence to B that includes a driveway permit as issued by the town of Lunenburg, as opposed to lumping it in with the foundation as noted within the Building Code.
Now, you have the option of accepting it as he wants you to amend it.
I think it sounds reasonable.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So, those are, there are going to be two amendments that we will discuss and debate in a minute. Mr. Costa, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just a point of order so that it's clear before we begin debating the proposed amendment. So, there are multiple references to this 500 cubic yard standard.
Okay.
One of those references is in Section 140-3, Section, subsection B on page seven, about a third of the way down the page. Under the applicability of the bylaw, it states that the bylaw shall be applicable to the filling of land that involves 500 cubic yards or more of material per calendar. That's subsection B2.
Right.
But then there's also a further reference in the Exemption Section on page eight, which is Section 140-4, and specifically subsection E, where it says that exempt from the bylaw is earth removal or the placement of fill that involves less than 500 cubic yards. And I think that, to further complicate things, what we heard is that this 1,000 cubic yard amendment is only going to apply to filling and not removal. Is that correct? Filling and not removal?
It is.
So, we need to, we need to break E out into two sections or two sentences, maybe just two sentences, so as to not affect the numbering or the lettering, to say earth removal that involves less than 500 cubic yards, or placement of fill that involves less than 1,000 cubic yards.
Now, you're going to have to write. I think so. Because then it'll be in the language that you want, the way you want it. Because that's, you've agreed with what he said, right?
I agree.
Okay, all right.
And I have one last request for an amendment.
Keep going.
For two...
You're on the roll.
Yeah. For 2B in the same section, the 18 inches, as I mentioned, you know, a 10-inch gravel base, 4-inch asphalt, doesn't really allow for any kind of grade at all. So, I'm, I'm asking to just strike B and let it be constrained by the other sections in, in this proposal. Because that, and it's not, it's an oar, if you notice. So, 18 inches, it's not really constrained to an area.
So, I have three changes on page seven. I've got halfway down, under, next to 2, the filling of land that involves, and you want it to say 1,000 cubic yards. Couple of sentences down, you want B to be totally stricken, which refers to eight inches of depth. You want, under exemptions, under B, to include driveways as permitted. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. All right.
And I will not push my luck any further.
You all set?
I am, thank you.
Excellent, good job. Okay, hold on. So, we'll vote on them separately, sir, so don't go too far.
Was there a second on the Third Amendment, Mr. Moderator?
There's always a second. People want to let people make their amendments, understood. Sir?
Dave Rogers, 82 Highland Street. I wonder if the planning board contacted those that have existing or current earth removal permits when they were reviewing these regulations and these changes, and what kind of input they've had, so that, my concern is that they're not blindsided and that it was a participatory kind of a, of a process, so that, you know, they at least understand and, and, and agree with the proposal, because I, I have no idea what all of this means.
The, the, the current singular holder of a earth removal permit in town is aware that this was moving forward. The bylaw itself doesn't substantially change the way that they would go about it. It actually works in their favor in increasing the time limits of the length of the permits. Currently, they're one-year permits. This would change to three-year permits with two-year renewal cycles. In speaking with them, I talked it right out of existence. This doesn't change for them. What they'll be integral in working with is the regulations on how the planning board applies these, what materials are required, what regulations would govern the use of the earth removal permits, hours of operation, days of operation, those sort of things. I have been in contact with the folks at Keating's, and once the planning board has a substantial draft put together of those regulations, we'll work with them to get their input on, on how it would impact their, their operation.
Okay, I, I, I'm going to be very specific. Have, have they looked at this and, and do they...
They have not provided comments on this specific bylaw.
They have not?
They have not.
Have, has the, the planning board extended themselves and asked them to come in and review this, where they, they are a very large processor in, in this regard?
We did speak with them. We did not ask them to review the bylaw, because again, the bylaw increases quantities and length of permit. It doesn't substantially change anything other than the earth fill, and bring the language to more contemporary language.
So, in, in basic layman's terms, there's nothing in this bylaw that would be problematic for the, the folks that have the earth removal permits?
There is nothing. They would continue to operate in their existing permits until this went into place, and then they would work within the regulations that will be set forth by the planning board for their new permits.
Okay, I, I just, very succinctly, I, I think it's very important that, that we have regulations like this, but it's equally as important that, that we do it in concert with these folks, because, you know, when you're getting ready to have a replacement of a septic system, you need all the stuff that, that we get, and, and then all of a sudden, you know, the light goes on, says, holy mackerel, I didn't realize that this was so punitive for me doing a, a new septic system, so I'm encouraged. Did you say just one person has an earth removal permit in this town?
There is only one corporation that holds an earth removal permit currently.
Just one?
Correct.
Powells don't have one?
I don't believe that there are currently any open as of the last renewal cycle.
I see, okay, because I, I see him, okay, thank you very much.
They do have a lot of earth, and they move it, but I don't believe they're currently removing it.
Yeah, gotcha.
Town Council wrote that out. See if that works the way you think it's going to. Right here, right in front of me, please. I'm just walking around, I need the exercise.
Jonas Basito, Malpas Road.
John Esposito, Malpas Road. Who, who initiated this article?
This has been underway for about two years. It started with the Board of Selectmen. A former selectman inquired about adding earth fill and in that discussion, the current standards of our earth removal bylaw came up and the process of moving it from the Board of Selectmen to the planning board also came up.
All right, and what's the purpose?
I'm sorry.
What is the actual purposes? What do you got, 40, 40, 50 regulations in here you want to get passed?
It's one singular, well, I guess it's two regulations on earth fill and on earth removal.
Well, there's the, there's the dust, the noise.
All, all of that is currently enforced, whether it's codified or not, in the existing bylaw.
Why are we going through all that again if it's already being enforced? The Bill and Inspector has a lot of jurisdiction over noise, dust. Conservation has jurisdiction over, over conservation issues. This is, this is way overreaching, you know, it's, I think anyhow. You gotta, you people should go through every one of these and see what this is. This is, this is all going to come back to bite every one in this room sooner or later. You gotta, if you want to take fill out of somebody's yard and put it in somebody else's yard, you're going to have two permits. You're going to have two fees. You've got to go to the planning board. You've got to get this, you've got to get that.
Only if you're removing 500 cubic yards or more.
Well, 500 yards is nothing. 500 yards is nothing now. You don't realize what 500 yards is. That's peanuts. That's nothing. They got trucks now that carry 25 yards on a load. 500 yards is nothing. And everybody in this room is going to be affected sooner or later. You're going to want to get a little bit of dirt out of your yard? Do you want to go to, put a little bit of dirt in your yard, fill it in a hole? It's not going to happen. All you're trying to do is, I don't really know what you're trying to do, but it's, to me, it's, it's way out of control, the whole thing. Read every one of these articles, every one of those paragraphs in this article. Are you going to go over every one of those?
Sir.
Every single one?
Currently, you need a permit?
Mr. Bernie, just let him, let him answer his question, okay? Go ahead.
Yeah, is every one of them going to be discussed? Every, on every page?
If people have que, if you would like me to read the entire article word for word, I will.
Yeah, I'd like you to go over every single one of them. Probably take you two or three hours, though.
Mr. Esposito, we're not going to do that, okay?
Well, I mean, I think the people, they should know what they're voting on.
I'm, I'm speaking. Thank you. So the whole article was printed in the warrant, okay? So everybody's had a chance to read everything. One gentleman got up and wanted to make amendments to specific articles. So that's appropriate, okay? But we're not going to go over each and every article, each and every line, each and every section, okay? That would take us all day. We don't have all day.
So you're going to vote on stuff that nobody has read?
I hope they were all unnoticed to read it because they had it in their warrant.
Well, I suggest that somehow, you get rid of this until you figure out what's going on in these pages. There's a lot of stuff in there that you don't realize.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I would just like to point out to the previous speaker that the current earth removal bylaw requires an earth removal permit for anything greater than 10 cubic yards. This is a 50-fold increase to what we're, what the, the removal quantity threshold is for an earth removal permit.
Sir, thank you. Sir, over here.
Jeff Bingham, 150 Peninsula Drive. How much, I didn't see anything in here about costs. Permit fees?
That would all be borne out in the regulations.
When's that going to happen?
Well, the planning board can't promulgate regulations to a bylaw that it doesn't have authority to create. So if the bylaw were passed, they would look at creating the fee schedule per the regulations. Our current special permit fee schedule, I think off the top of my head, it's, it's $200 or $300 for a special permit. This is not a special permit, it's an earth removal permit. It would most likely be in, in that, that ballpark at the discretion of the board.
And who is going to determine through you, Mr. Moderator, who's going to determine the amount of cubic yards taken out? Are they going to have to hire an engineer, a regular homeowner, to determine how much fill can come out of one property, say, building a corral for a horse or something? Who determines that? Is that an extra cost?
Are we talking about something that's done with a building permit or just working the land?
Working with the land.
And is the, the dirt coming off of the property or staying on the property?
It could be coming off the property and then replacing it with other material that's coming onto the property.
Then it would, they would be looking for a calculated estimate. I, I imagine most homeowners aren't doing that type of removal themselves and there are methods to figure that out.
So you're relying on the contractor doing the work to be able to do it?
It could be that. They could require an engineer. It's, it would, generally, when the planning board puts together regulations, they require an engineer. They give themselves the ability to provide waivers and then it's up to, to them to approve the waiver or not. Again, I, I don't want to speak in, in specifics because the board has not undertaken finalizing any regulations at this time.
Okay, I just feel that it's going to be an extra cost to the homeowner if they want to do a project on their property, that this is going to create an extra cost for them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sir.
Darrell Plant, 490 Lancaster Ave. I've written down what I'd like to say because I don't do well in public. After reading Article 11, I concluded that once again, the planning board is trying to rewrite a bylaw using vague language and terminology which can be interpreted many different ways. They have also asked for unlimited power to rewrite this bylaw anytime without oversight or a town vote, resulting in the continued erosion of real property rights. Section 140-6, Permit Criteria for Earth Removal, Subsection A, the PGA shall include items 1 through 5 in determining whether to issue a permit. These items include the words like "social," "economic," "community," "natural environment," "neighborhood character." These terms are not defined and are vague. Virtually everyone has a different interpretation of these words and what they mean to them. This could allow the PGA to deny permits arbitrarily based on personal views. Section 140-7, General Limitations, Item 2, words like "objectionable" or "detrimental" to adjacent properties are used, can be used to deny permits. Who gets to decide what is objectionable or detrimental? Section 140-7, Item 5, permit will be denied if it results in a change of topography and cover which will be disadvantageous to the most appropriate final use of the land. Final use of the land. Has the town of Lunenburg already decided what the most appropriate final use of my land is? Maybe somebody should tell me. Maybe they should pay my taxes. Do we have private property rights anymore? I would like to ask Town Council two questions, or the planning board. Would you consider this article to be a significant shift from private property rights to government? That's number one. And number two, Section 140-8 grants authority to the PGA to essentially rewrite this bylaw tomorrow. So what's the point? I will vote no to this article. Please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jeffrey.
Sure. I, I opposed this when it came before us for a couple of different reasons, and I just want to highlight what they are. So first is, you know, I, I want to first mention that I think the planning board, what they're trying to do here, as I understand it, is that we currently have a bylaw that is really hard to enforce because it says if you want to take more than, as, as Mr. Bernie noted, more than 10 cubic yards away from your property or bring it to it, you need to go before the Board of Selectmen to get their approval. That's the current process. So what this does, and I met with PJ Keating to talk about earth removal projects, and I, and I don't know if they explicitly said to me that they are in favor of this, but they certainly mentioned that they are looking for a process that's a lot easier than the one that we currently have in place, which is to come before the planning board, excuse me, come before the Board of Selectmen. I think that the planning board did their due diligence in trying to craft some legislation here for us to fully comprehend and get a gist of what it is that they're trying to regulate. My issue is, does anyone think that these pages are approachable to the average person? And my, and my answer to that is no. I think that laws must be easy to read from the seventh grade up. And if you can't open this up and understand everything that's in here, then it doesn't do its job. So while I respect the work of the planning board fully and totally, and I understand where they're coming from on this, I would deny this so that way it can be reworked and just a little clearer, a lot less than what we're looking at today.
Terry Birchfield, 118 White Street. My question actually goes to, I read that the purpose of this article and associated regulations is to regulate earth removal operations and landfilling operations. I further read that earth removal operation is defined as any commercial mining, stripping, quarrying, filling, digging, or blasting of earth originating from the town of Lunenburg and its transportation into or out of the town of Lunenburg. Is that the, this bylaw?
That is the general intent.
Is there an effect on personal property?
Yes. For instance, Costa. And Mr. Bernie?
I'm only, I'm only, I'm only asking because basically where it says "commercial," "mining," "stripping," and others, I was just looking for clarification as to who this affects and, and why.
Mr. Bernie.
So the definition of earth removal operation would be something like a PJ Keating where their operation is to remove it. The bylaw does regulate the removal of 500 cubic yards or more on any property. So is there an impact on personal property? Every zoning and general bylaw that regulates use of property has some impact. I don't believe that this would take any rights away from an individual. It would be looking to work on regulating the way that is done in a manner that is consistent with health, safety, welfare for the town of Lunenburg, its residents, and the land in general.
Thank you. Ms. Adams, and then you, sir.
My name is Robert Sanderson. I live on Northfield Road. I worked at the Keating Company for 48 years. I'm retired.
Started talking.
And your plan, what, what you want to do here, never mind Keating itself, but like John Esposito, like John Esposito said, everybody here in this room will be affected and especially by price. The cost will go up again for material. And if anybody is going to build a house or put up a garage and they have a, a low area and they have to have fill brought in, only them would you find out what this is all about. This is a bad idea. And I'm not doing this for the Keating Company because I don't work there anymore. I'm talking about every individual. When you have something done, if you have a project done and it's big, you'll pay for it.
Thank you. Now, Ms. Adams.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to put a little bit of history here because I think this is, there's a little bit of, of missing in terms of where this all got started for some of us a while back. And I don't know what all the right answers are, and we have some amendments with, you know, how many cubic yards. But we currently have an earth removal permitting process. So it's not like tonight we're creating a new process or creating something new in our government. We have an earth removal permitting process and it belongs to the Board of Selectmen. And when I first, I guess it's been about a year and a half, and I had followed everything very closely, and so I didn't have to do a lot of research on a lot of topics. And when we first got hit with earth removal processing as something we were doing, we all really didn't know what we were doing. And we got a lot of input from the Land Use Director, a lot of really good guidance from a former, former building commissioner. And as we talked about, there is a process, may or may not have been really following it or understanding it. And the former commissioner did a lot of work to start to clean up old permits, make sense of permits that were given. And, and in that process, we started to discuss, should we be the ones issuing earth removal permits? Because it's really out of the scope of a lot of other things that we do. So what's happening here tonight, if this passed, is that the current earth removal permitting process would eventually transfer from us to the planning board, who is more involved with, you know, site work and all those different things. So we're not creating, the planning board didn't create something new. There's a bit of a transfer going on here. If it doesn't pass tonight, then we're left with what we currently have and have to start acknowledging it more and, and utilizing things like the 10 cubic yards. So there's, there's something here. If, if we don't look at this or amend it or have it, we do have something and it's something that we've just started to pay more attention to and follow. So I, there's been a few comments about overreaches or too much government, but, but this already exists and it, the, the process belong, we permit. And, and so it's, there's still a permitting authority on this topic. It's not like we're creating a new one. We're just trying to clean up and organize something that already exists.
Thank you. Sir.
Dave Mackey, 384 Townsend Harbor Road. Actually, it is creating new regulation because the existing.
Keep your voice up, sir. I have trouble hearing.
The existing, I'm sorry. So the, it is creating new regulation that specifically does affect individual homeowners. So there's nothing in there regulating fill today. So this is brand-new regulations regarding fill. And, and it's difficult to meet the other requirements, you know? When I looked at a piece of land in town because I wanted to build here, I, I had to meet all the dimensional requirements through the house, had to perk, had to be outside wetlands, had to have a slope that wasn't 12 degree, you know, off 12 degrees. It's really hard. And it's already burdensome enough to, to meet all those. If you hit the lottery and find a lot that you might be able to afford and get through all that, to add on a planning board approval to add fill. So I would need to hire a lawyer because I agree, I, I don't understand all of these terms. You know, loss of important wildlife, as defined by who? There's nothing here for that. Wildlife habitat, okay, well, yeah, you're going to build a house, there's going to be some habitat that's lost. I agree. The, the, will result in the transportation of materials in such a manner to cause traffic congestion, dust, spillage, noise, or other nuisances or hazards, particularly, particularly on residential streets. That meets the definition of a dump truck. Because it's slow, it's going to block traffic, you see the trucks come out, you're, you're saying a limitation is a dump truck. So whether it's 25, you're saying it's limited to about 25 trucks because that's 500 yards. That's not commercial. That's people. Keating's, Powells, 25 yards, they do that in a day. Or, I'm sorry, 25 trucks, they do that in a day. So it's just, I think it, I think it does go too far. I agree with what you're trying to do to clean up these permits. I think it should apply to excavations. Let's take it in steps and, and maybe just clear up the language a little bit to, to help the existing businesses continue to do business, help the existing people who are already going to build in this town and, and meet all the other regulations we already have today.
Thank you. I'm going to, I'm going to step outside the norm of what we normally do and see if we could take a straw vote. Before I take it through each and every one of Mr. Mackey's proposed amendments, let's just see where we are on the entire article. So if you want to address the entirety of the article briefly, if you need to, and then I want to take a straw vote to see where we're at.
Again, I'll, I'll reiterate what Selectmen Adams said in that the article is, is a reconfiguring of a permit process that the Board of Selectmen currently handles. They have found it cumbersome, applicants have found it cumbersome. So we looked at rewriting some of the regulations. Earth fill was introduced as a potential issue due to other communities in the county as well as the state dealing with issues of properties being filled with unsuitable fill from questionable sources. The planning board undertook the creation of this article. We discussed it with the Board of Selectmen. And what you have in front of you now is, is actually probably. And what you have in front of you now is actually probably, in some ways, more lenient, and in other ways, less lenient than what we currently have. The introduction of fill, again, is probably less lenient, but the thresholds are higher. It was stated that the planning board can rewrite this at any time using Section 140-8. That's a misunderstanding. That would be regulations. They cannot change anything that the bylaw regulates. They can only address the way in which they regulate it. Plans that are required, substance of the hearing, potential conditions, those would all be outlined within the regulations, not thresholds of fill, who gets regulated, what the exemptions are. Those can only be amended by town meeting.
Thank you. So, non-binding, I'm not going to go through each and every amendment if we have no sense of passing the article. So just let me know before we go any further. How many people are in favor of passing or approve of Article 11? Signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Yeah, see, I don't think it's, I don't think there's much sense in going through each and every amendment at this point in time. So I'd like to take a vote on the article not amended, and see where we're at officially. So I don't think I have a planning board recommendation. So was there a vote, Mr. Bernie, on the planning board?
I don't know that there was an official vote. The board did forward the article to the warrant. There is a majority of the board in attendance, so they could huddle and give a recommendation. It is a general bylaw, not a zoning bylaw.
If you wish to take a vote as a planning board, you can do that. I'm not requiring it. I was just asking. It's a posted meeting, so they would have to do it at a microphone and have a discussion, if they chose to. But I'm not requiring it. I need a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen.
We already recommended four to one to approve, but, Mr. Moderator, I do want to introduce a point of order. I don't know, I understand your intent, but I don't know that you can dismiss amendments that have been duly made and seconded for the sake of expediency.
Yeah. Yeah, I could do that. Yeah. Yeah, okay. But thank you. But I still need your recommendation.
I... We recommended approval four to one.
All right. And Finance, I need your recommendation.
Actually, I would ask for comment before making a recommendation. We're struggling at this point to identify the direct financial impact to the town budget.
From my point of view, the chair's question just now was direct effect on the budget of the town of Lunenburg, and I don't believe there is. I think the effect is, as the speakers have been saying here on the floor, that it's more to the citizens and the businesses than it is to the town of Lunenburg.
Any other comments? No other comments, then we'll do the vote. Mr. Passios.
What do we vote?
Whether we recommend approval of Article 11?
No.
They didn't vote.
No.
Actually, I should ask first whether or not we want to take the vote on whether or not there's financial impact, and whether we want to make a recommendation. Okay, I'm sorry. So basically, then, do I have a motion to recommend no financial impact, no referral?
No.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Passios. Aye, that there's no financial impact.
Aye.
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 All right, thank you.
So, Mr. Alonso, I respect your opinion on that. Try to think of ways we can not have 10 and a half hour and five-hour meetings that always go to midnight. So find ways that we can kind of cut to the chase. So let me ask Mr. Mackey if, given the sentiment of the straw vote, if you want to withdraw your amendments.
I'm going to hedge mine.
I'm not a gambling man, so I am going to ask for a vote on the amendment in case it gets passed.
You got it. So the amendments are, all those in favor of amending, these are all, start on page seven and go over to page eight. The first one, we're going to vote each one individually. Section 140-3B2, replace the word 500 cubic yards to 1,000 cubic yards. All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
It is amended. Article, the second amendment proposal, Section 140-3B2B, delete in its entirety that line. You recall that? It's about three sentences down from the one we just read. It's small para, it's a small B. The filling of land in excess of 18 inches in depth above the existing grade. He wants to delete that entire sentence. All those in favor of deleting that sentence, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Be deleted. The third part, Section 140-4B, add to the end, or driveways as permitted. That's at the very bottom, capital B. Adding, as driveways, or driveways as permitted. All those in favor of that amendment, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is amended. And on the next page, page eight, 140-4 capital E, which is right near the top, earth removal that involves less than 500 cubic yards, or placement of fill that involves less than 1,000 cubic yards. That would be how it would be amended. And that was at the suggestion of Town Council. All those in favor of that amendment, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The amendment carries. Now you have the entire article before you. All those in favor of Article 11 in its entirety as amended, first by Mr. Bernie on that amendment that's before you with some language changes, and then on the four amendments that have been approved, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The article is defeated. Moving along to Article 12. Ms. Luck.
I move that the town vote to accept as a public or townway, under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 82, as amended, that certain roadway known as Butterfly Lane, as shown on plans on file in the Board of Selectmen and Town Clerk's offices, entitled Butterfly Lane as built street plan of land in Lunenburg, Mass., prepared for Mike Crowley dated August 16, 2019, and being Plan 14-L-876 by Whitman &amp; Bingham Associates, LLC. And Butterfly Lane Acceptance Plan of land in Lunenburg, Mass., prepared for Mike Crowley... Oh, did I reread that again? ...dated August 16, 2019, and being Plan 14-L-876 by Whitman &amp; Bingham Associates, LLC. And to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept for nominal consideration a deed of a fee interest therein, said roadway having been determined to be unique, to be used for municipal purposes consistent with those uses to which other public ways in the town are customarily put.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Selectmen, your recommendation?
We deferred it five to zero.
Finance?
Finance Committee deferred for presentation.
Okay. Mr. Bernie, your floor.
So Butterfly Lane is off of Elmwood Road. It's at the former 50 Elmwood Road, the Sugar House. It is a nine-lot subdivision that was approved by the planning board in the spring of 2014. It was recently completed construction. It was accepted to be complete by the planning board through inspection by the planning board's review engineer. All bonds for the finalization of construction and services were released by the planning board. The applicant applied to the Board of Selectmen for layout hearing. The road was accepted for layout, as you see here. There are street trees, curbing, there, is there a pointer on this?
No.
Whoops. Middle button. There's a small detention pond here, and a large, I'll call it a detention pond, it's really just a low area where everything flows and goes off into the woods. The only services in the road are the drainage. It has been cleaned, the drainage was cleaned prior to the planning board releasing the bond. That included all the catch basins and the two proprietary Vortechnic separators being vacuumed out. The pavement is in excellent shape. The cul-de-sac is bounded by granite curb, as are the radii on Elmwood Road. And here's a quick, you know, timeline. As I said, everything has been done in order. All nine homes are built and occupied.
Did the planning board take a vote on this, Mr. Bernie?
The planning board did not take a vote on the town meeting article. They did accept the road. Through the subdivision process, they held the bond to complete the construction of the road and any associated facilities. They did accept that that was completed to the standards required by general engineering and to the plans that were submitted in 2014.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments, issues with the Butterfly Lane? Sir?
Mr. Bauder, Dave Rogers, 82 Highland Street. I hope that this article is defeated, and I'll tell you why. We would then, we, the town, would be responsible for repaving this, plowing it, I think, cleaning out the catch basins and the holding areas for water, it would be our responsibility. And I want to make sure that folks understand that there are some other opportunities that will have similar votes to take, potentially coming down the road. And I hope that they are defeated as well. Because we continue to spend money for the road maintenance, and it's got to stop because we just don't, in my view, we just don't have the wherewithal to do everything that we have to do if we accept this kind of a thing. So I hope it is defeated. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
How you doing? Glencoeza 11 Butterfly Lane?
Yep.
I understand what the gentleman's saying, but the nine homes are there, everybody pays taxes, we got to pay our bills. So it's not like the town... Excuse me. It's not like the town has taken on extra costs. We're all taxpayers, we're paying full boat, aren't we? So I would imagine that we should have a road paved like anyone else that pays taxes, potentially has a road paved? Yes, sir?
No. I'll, that's okay.
Go ahead, I'm ready for questions.
That's okay. He's letting me know that he wants to address what you've said. So if you're done, you can put the microphone down. Thank you much. Sir?
You need to tell us then.
Could we, I'm sorry, Jeremy Mador with Old Farm Road. Could we be, could we get further explanation as to what it means that the Board of Selectmen to accept for nominal consideration a deed of a fee interest therein? What precisely does that mean?
Go ahead, Mr. Costa.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So nominal consideration essentially means that there's no appropriation required, there's no, there's no money changing hands. Nominal consideration would typically be recited in a deed as a dollar, or a consideration of less than $100. It seals the deal, so to speak, but there's no money that actually changes hands, so there's no cost to the town. The fee interest is just a legal term that means the actual ownership of the roadway, the earth itself, the land, will be owned by the town.
So it's basically saying the town accepts responsibility for the further improvements, maintenance, and such of the roadway proposed? Or that's already in existence, rather?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. That's correct. When this is accepted as a public way, and the fee interest is acquired by the town, like any other public way in town that the town owns, the town is responsible for the care and maintenance of that roadway. Correct?
Okay. So on that note, up until now, it's been the private responsibility of the association there? Is that what's currently going on?
Mr. Bernie?
So, the, there's no homeowners' association that I'm aware of. The development corporation that proposed the road and the lots is the owner of the subdivision road until such time as town meeting accepts it or doesn't, and at the point, his obligation is essentially done. So for the period of time that it's been under construction, he has been maintaining and plowing the road in that sense.
Okay, so it's been successfully maintained up until date by someone other than the town. Is, are all of the lots on there now officially built and sold off?
My understanding is they are all built and occupied.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jeffries, then Ms. Adams.
So ordinarily, my good friend, Mr. Rogers here, ordinarily, I would disagree with you on this area, that I think if you own, if you own town, if you own property in town that's on a road, I think that you should, your road should be accepted, generally speaking. But my conflict with this comes with when you design things that are maybe cheaper for you as a developer, but more expensive to maintain. And my understanding is that this road, unlike other roads, has a rather costly drainage system. So, Mr. Bernie, can you just speak to what the drainage system is on this road, and what the cost is to maintain that?
Okay. There, so what we see here, there's a series of catch basins, which are pretty standard, you know, grate, deep sump, which is essentially, it's a big tube down in the ground that collects silt. There's the two detention basins, which exist, which, again, pretty standard. I think what you're referring to, Mr. Jeffries, is about here and about here, there are two what are called Vortechnic separators. They're very large manholes. These ones in particular have what I would best be described as plastic sheets wrapped into a coil of sorts that the water comes into, it spins the water around to the point where the solids that would be dissolved, your sand, your gravel, your litter, gum wrappers, whatever people have thrown in the street, settle out to the bottom, and the water is then discharged into one of the detention ponds. These are somewhat controversial at times because they require a vacuum truck to clean them. They are most usually clogged by solids such as sand or silt from winter road operations. My understanding is, in the past few years, we've moved away from a lot of sand use, especially on flatter roads, using mostly salt, so there's very few solids entering these types of systems. My understanding is that it's about $650 a year to clean these storm drains. That's a four-hour minimum rental of a third-party contractor who would come in, owns and maintains their own vacuum truck. Essentially, these things have what you would see as a normal manhole. They would come in, they would lift the manhole, they'd take the giant tube, they'd stick it down, they'd suck all the gok out, and they'd move on to the next one. So I think what happens a lot of times is the town doesn't have a $400,000 act truck, and it would be expensive for the town to own and maintain something like that. We maintain most of our own catch basins ourself with the clam digger, essentially like the claw machine, you drop it down, you pull all the stuff out, you put it in a truck and take it off. This is slightly different, but fairly minimal cost on an annual basis.
Hold on, hold on.
That we do, that... Well, it's not a basin, it's a physical structure, it's an underground vault. Off the top of my head, there are none that I know of, but I'm also, that's not in my scope of practice. I would expect that there are other Vortechnic separators in town. I can, I could probably name a half dozen commercial projects that have been permitted in the time I've worked here that have used them. But they, the town itself is not responsible for maintaining those. They are an excellent product for removing suspended solids. They do it in a very small area, they do it efficiently, and many commercial lots do use them. They're not an unusual item to see in a drainage system.
Ms. Adams?
Okay, sure. I just wanted to recognize a non-citizen that I think wanted to speak tonight. Mr. Crowley.
Sorry, Mr. Clark, we'll get to you.
I just wanted to speak on, you know, those vortex systems. I mean, to start things off, we didn't put those in the road because...
Who are you, sir? Who are you, sir?
I'm Chris Crowley, the developer of the project.
Okay.
We did not put those in because we wanted to. We put those in because they're a requirement of a town at, of the town at time of planning board and conservation. So my understanding of this, when we were going through that process five years ago or so, was that someday we would be here today to, you know, get this road accepted. So with, you know, these talks about an expensive system, it was not my idea or developer's idea to do that. That's the first thing. And then, you know, the only real expense beyond a, one of, any of the other subdivisions is the actual $650 annual cleaning of those two vortex systems. You know, I've tallied up, the residents are paying $68,000 in taxes between the nine houses. I really don't see $650 as a big burden.
Thank you. Sir?
Yeah, and to repave the road...
And your name and address?
Oh, Mike Clark, 275 Cross Road. I don't know if you need to repave a cul-de-sac every 10 to 15 years when you don't even replace the shingles on your house, you know, in 20 years. But, and then the cost, I mean, we have nine taxpayers on a cul-de-sac. We just voted for conservation land with, what, a half a mile long road going into it so the disabled can access it, but we didn't, we didn't talk about any cost to maintaining a road through conservation land, and we gave up $18,000 in tax revenue. So I don't, I don't see what the issue is with accepting a road with nine, nine residents on it and paying for having the town DPW plow it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Darrell Plant, 490 Lancaster Ave. I'd like to ask one simple question, really, to the presenter. Did the developer meet all his obligations?
He did.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Nobody outside the microphone? I think we're ready to vote, but we need a selectman recommendation.
Again, it's a roll call vote. You can make the comments that you want as you go down the line. Mr. Jeffries?
I appreciate the additional information regarding that. I'm aye.
Mrs. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. McQuaid?
Aye.
Mrs. Luck?
Aye.
An aye for myself.
And Finance?
Finance Committee recommends approval for or to nothing.
Thank you. Okay. Butterfly Lane is now before you. All those in favor of this article, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
It passes, Mr. Rogers. You're welcome. Article 13.
Okay. Article 13, I move that the town vote to support the demolition of the old primary school located at 30 School Street, which vote shall be non-binding. Resolution meant to provide guidance to the Board of Selectmen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Support of selectmen, recommendation?
Okay. We had no recommendation, and the, I believe the reason behind that, and people can change tonight if they want, is that we're really looking for information, so, in the way of almost like a survey. So I'm making the presentation on this. I'm going to start with an explanation. There's...
Well, let's ask Finance if they've got any recommendation.
The Finance Committee will have no recommendation on this.
Okay. And before you start, Ms. Adams, I'll remind everybody, as I'm sure you are, that you have a survey, and they want you to fill it out tonight, and hand it in tonight. Let's let Ms. Adams make her presentation, then we can have questions.
Okay. Thank you. So what we have is the old primary building, and it comes up in different conveyance articles, and it comes up in different contexts over the years, and it was one of our goals this year to focus on that lot and to figure out how to move forward. So this as an article tonight, I just want to say it's not trying to circumvent the future input from the Architectural Preservation District. It's not looking to avoid input from the Historic Commission. It's just looking to get the sentiment from the legislative body, which is Town Meeting. So anything that is decided on any of these future lots or future municipal buildings requires a Town Meeting vote to fund it. And so as we look at any of these buildings and we think of what they could be or what they should be, it's going to come back in the form of an article that needs funding. And if the sentiment is in one direction or another, and we're not working on the outcome that matches what people look to see, then I think we'll keep spinning the wheels on some of these parcels. Some of the information that is in these slides, and they'll move very quickly, come from the Vertex Trial, and just to put context on how slow we are, the Vertex information was gathered December 2017. So the information we're kind of talking about tonight is already two years old, because we gather information and we sit on it, and we gather information and we sit on it. So we're looking for sentiment here in terms of whether or not people would support the demolition of this building. Okay. So that was sort of the introduction. In the Vertex Trial, this is how they listed the building history. According to the site contact, who's our DPW director, the building has functioned as a school building since construction in 1928. The building was observed to be in a state of disrepair and reportedly had been vacant since 2005. The building was observed to have been vandalized and reportedly used for SWAT exercises. All utilities and services have been turned off except for limited electrical service. Okay. So we have the slides that correspond with this, Article 13. That's, the first one's the one I had read. So where are we, Heather? My second slide has some pictures. Okay. Built in 1928, vacant since 2005. The building sits on a 2.7 acre lot. Current building has 12,300 square feet. The Vertex Trial says 11,700, so we'll say approximately 12,000. Old Primary School, the Vertex Property Condition Assessment was reported on in February 2018. They assessed the building in December 2017. The overall property facility condition rating was poor, and there's, they did calculations to assess the buildings. It was 70% of the total replacement cost. 0% to 10% is an okay building, and then as you get closer to 100, that's a complete failure of a building. So 70% is really high on a failure rate. Immediate repairs excluding the allowance for the evaluation and abatement of hazardous materials would be 718,000 for immediate repairs. The upkeep and maintenance was 775,000. And then additional costs for general ADA improvements were 73,000. Here, on the next one, it has the immediate cost, and so I just want, I'm sorry, I just wanted to go to the definition of immediate repair, and that was assessing things that were complete system failures, ha, okay, hazards and things like that. So immediate repair number in a Vertex Trial isn't a total cost to repair, it's just what the building most critically needed. And then it broke it down into different levels of needs. Another important thing to mention, when they assess these numbers, they were assessing like-for-like. So they're just looking for repairs to keep the building exactly who it was. So these numbers aren't looking for renovation or conversion, it's just like-for-like numbers. Okay. So I'm on annual operating costs for the old primary school. We spend approximately 12,000, I mean, $1,200 a year. And sometimes we, I think we just voted to spend a little bit extra for some plywood and upgrades on an alarm system. But basically, we don't take care of the building anymore. Then there are some benefits, and it goes on to two pages, and all the benefits aren't in one place. So I'll just read down the benefits that are on two slides. The lot is a good lot. It's located off a main street. It's next to the Historical Society Building. It could offer parking. It's an opportunity for green space, and it's a little bit redundant on the two slides. And then the costs, I mean, I've already talked a bit about the Vertex Trials, but basically, the building has nothing left in it that is operating in a functional sense. And so that's basically it for the slides. And so back to the purpose of putting an article here is to get the sentiment, if people are ready to let go of this municipal building and focus on the other ones that are in disrepair, or if the sentiment's to hold on to it, then we have to figure out what that means, or else we just really have a vacant, dilapidated building that is going to continue, in my mind, to become more dangerous and just more of an eyesore. That's all.
Well, they're looking for feedback. Come on. Sir?
Good evening, Mr. Honore. Jim Leveque, 33 Lancaster Ave. I am speaking tonight in my capacity as the Vice Chair of the Architectural Preservation District Commission. We were approved by this body over four years ago in May of 2015 to protect and preserve the architectural heritage of the district in Lunenburg. We discussed this warrant article at length at our last meeting on the 5th, and as a result, I was tasked to say that I've moved that we pass over Article 13. As written, this article lacks substance, context, and specificity in terms of a plan. Rather than clarify what to do with the property, it confuses the issues of preservation. It's unclear what we're voting for. If we're looking for specifically guidance, we have surveys that the Board of Selectmen have put out to get that guidance. And there is no governance for this question. And that the body that votes on this tonight may not be the same body that votes when there is an eventual plan, considering it's almost empty now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir?
Pete Lincoln, 46 Hemlock Drive. We've been kicking around this poor old building for two generations now, and it seems that the surveys, which are non-binding, don't mean a damn thing. All we need to do is put this on the ballot in the spring, let a big percentage of the town decide to finally do something, instead of putting this off for a third generation.
Thank you. Mr. Jeffries?
Selakman Adams and I really supported this non-binding question to be here tonight for a couple of reasons. So we do have a survey that has been distributed out that we discussed in a workshop for several hours to kind of come up with some good plans. And it is the, one of the goals of this board is to come to the town in the springtime with a plan for what to do with the primary school. I think that where we are unsure is, does the town have a will to tear it down? If the answer is no, then that then focuses us on what to do with the building structure as is for future use. If the answer tonight is, you're okay with tearing this building down, then that then changes the options for us for how to proceed. You also have a ranked choice survey tonight, which we've also asked you to complete, because it kind of looks at those options that we've tailored it down to, of whether we keep the building, whether we tear the building down, what are the options that are really in front of us for feasible uses for it. So I would encourage this non-binding vote to not be passed over, but just simply to be a representation of your views. We've all been seeing this for 20 years. Do you want us to do something with the structure, or do you want us to move on from the structure and do something else?
Sir?
Mike Clark, 275 Cross Road. Sorry. You know, as one of the selectmen noted too, of what to do with other buildings, I'm just wondering what the real protocol is here within the town, if I reference the town charter, and who actually owns the building, the upkeep, and the planning for them. And Article 4 of the Charter under Town Manager for Powers and Duties says, "The Town Manager is to have full jurisdiction over the rental and use of all town facilities and property, except property under control of the School Committee, the Library Trustees, and the Conservation Commission, and shall be responsible for the maintenance and repair of all town buildings and facilities placed under his control by the Charter by law, vote of the town, or otherwise." So, and maybe this, so I don't know why this is going back to the selectman instead of the town manager. And, you know, with all these buildings, I'm wondering why the town manager is not leading per the town charter? And I don't see the Select Board having the authority on this day-to-day operation, charrettes, and everything else that's been going on with these buildings, and we still see them vacant or in disrepair, or wondering what to do. So I'm wondering why we don't go by what our charter says, and why the town manager isn't taking full control of these buildings and presenting her recommendations to the Board of Selectmen, and not the Board of Selectmen taking control of the day-to-day and micromanagement of this stuff? So I'm wondering if it's even legal to be, to be, having the Board of Selectmen so deep into, into this building planning and not have the town manager, and the town manager appointing her own independent, you know, building committees or reviews if it's needed, so that this stuff moves forward and gets done.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Mr. Passios?
I'm going to speak as a citizen this evening. Dave Passios, 56 Whiting Street, on this particular matter. There was an article in the Fitchburg Sentinel this past weekend that highlighted, among other things, this article, and explained some of the history of the primary prop, the old primary property. And in 2018 Annual Meeting, I was the face of a citizens petition that was brought forward, actually, by a group of people, but I turned out to be, ended up being the face of it. And at the end of the article that was in the paper just recently, it said that Town Meeting defeated demolition of the building. That did not ever happen. Through some political posturing, the article was more or less killed by being passed over indefinitely by the Historical Commission. So this Town Meeting has never voted yea or nay on demolition. So I support some direction from this meeting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Dave Mackey, 384 Townsend Harbor Road.
You want to know what we're going to do with the dirt, if we have to remove it?
Close! Close! Yeah, can I, can I buy the bricks? Actually, has any estimate been made to, as to what it would cost to bring this up to code? I mean, the energy of an old brick building like that, I'm assuming, is millions.
Someone, Ms. Adams, you have that?
Well, I mean, the Vertex Trial, which I had the numbers from, that's to bring it up to repairing its immediate needs. And the problem is, is that it's all based on like-for-like because there's been no defined purpose. So, so you can't create a cost for something you haven't decided. In terms of meeting ADA compliance and different things, depending upon what the building is, there's such a vast amount of costs associated that just the fact that it's almost $2 million to make it safe is sort of the starting point for the fact that it's a very expensive renovation. I think the biggest contrast is that just to make it safe like-for-like, so to be who it was in 2005, which was a school that was, I mean, it was in really poor condition, that's a couple million dollars. And the figure, when I was going through the slides, that I didn't specifically say that I think is an important point, is that, and I think it came from a TAP study in 2015, the demolition and hazardous waste removal for that building is $221,400, and then if you escalate that to 2019, to demolish and do hazardous waste, it's 256. So about $250,000 to remove the building. And the hazardous waste, I think, is $90,000, and that would have to be done even during a renovation. So you're really looking at under $200,000 to remove the building.
And is there any, it seems like we have too much empty buildings in the town between Passios and this building here. And I think there would be value to having extra parking that supports the farming community that's, that's trying to, you know, have a grassroots effort downtown, but downtown, but there's no... no real parking for that group. So, I think that I would support taking the building down and maybe recycling the bricks to the folks that feel a connection to that building. You know, there might actually be a fundraiser or you might be able to reuse those bricks or even sell them cheap to reclaim that material.
Thank you. Mr. McQuade?
Yeah, just to touch back on what's the previous question about bringing building up to code, Mrs. Adams read, code for what? I mean, what's the new use? We don't know that. And the cost is different for the town to do it using prevailing wage as it would be for somebody else to do it. I mean, in the past, we've talked about lease or sell the building of the property or whatever to pass the burden on to somebody else. Those have failed for various reasons, by slim margins sometimes and usually because people said they didn't have a definitive plan. But again, one of... My hesitation with... I was hesitant to pitch this to you all tonight because it can come with a dollar amount associated with it. There's an estimate for knocking it down and mitigating the hazardous materials, but then what? A parking lot, drainage, a park, it's more than just $200,000. So, it was, in my mind, a little premature to say, what do you want to do in a vacuum not knowing the cost and the burden to the town? Another point that I'd like to quickly touch on is in talking with the APDC, which was one of our... One of the things I pushed for and it's our responsibility to work with them because they're the ones looking after these buildings, their suggestion was to try to have somebody else, you know, either lease or buy the building to put the cost on them to fix the building up. So, there were other options out there, you know, that could have been addressed or we can address or go forward and look at, but again, it's felt the question is a little premature and without a little... Without the full background to present it tonight. So, that was just my hesitation.
Thank you. Ms.?
Hi, Laura Brzezinski, 21 Francis Avenue. I... We have been kicking the can down the road on this for years. I mean, it's been years of indecision and I feel that this non-binding article is an important first step towards doing something. We have a lot of empty buildings in town and I think it's time that we did something about this instead of just the constant disagreement and we're just frozen with these vacant buildings falling apart. So, I urge everyone to vote yes as a great first step.
Thank you. Sir?
Steve Weaver, 288 Holman Street. I'm in favor of the demolition of this building. It's... It has been going on and on and on. And I salute the selectmen for bringing this forward because we're doing nothing with our buildings and they're just sitting there. And this building is not only a fire trap, but it's, you know, it's an eyesore to the center of the town. I know that, you know, there are different grants out there that have been spoken to about paying for the parking lot that goes there, which is well-needed for the center of town to make that more vibrant. And I think that a nice park in the back of it would also help the farmer's market a lot in the center of town by having a place that's handicapped accessible. And I think that, you know, we wanted to... There was a vote coming up on the selectmen's meetings for $11,000 to patch it up this year. You know, I mean, maybe $11,000 isn't a lot to some people, but, you know, to some other people, it's a lot of money. And, you know, I think that we're just keep throwing money at this building and it's... It needs to go away. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Tom Bodkin, 64 Beale Street. You know, we've been down this road before with the Jones House. I mean, when I first moved to town, I used to see that house in the middle, right in the middle of Main Street and I used to think to myself, what's going on with these people? And then it turns out, the owners were the town. And then we went for years kicking around the Jones House. What are they going to do with the Jones House? They finally put it out, request for proposal, and it sold, albeit for a very small amount. I think it was $11,000. But I think everybody agreed today, when you see the Jones House, you're like, that was a great decision to get rid of that thing. So, my question is, has a request for proposal ever been made? Just put it out there and if we have to sell it for a dollar and someone's going to come in, fix it up, turn it into an asset in the community, whether it's a restaurant, senior housing, what have you? I think there's a paralysis of imagination here in terms of we're fearful of what might happen, but we're afraid to ask what could happen. So, I really would urge everybody to... Let's see if we can preserve this building. If someone wants to pay to pick, to clean it up and to make it into a tax-paying entity, why should we stand in front of it? We got plenty of time. We just picked up 300 acres tonight, so I don't know why we're so fearful that we're going to lose a couple acres in the center of town. Because, you know, there's a thing called eminent domain. If you really want it in your municipality, you can get it. You don't have to worry about it. You can get it. So, I would urge people, let's see if we can preserve it. Let's see if someone will buy it. If not, let's get rid of it.
Thank you. Mr. Leveque, you had a chance. Could the gentleman behind you speak?
Yes.
Thank you. Haven't heard from him all night.
Yes, good evening. My name is Paul White. I'm at 51 Gray Pond Road. I'm a newbie to the community. I haven't been here yet, but I came from the city of Peabody. And the city of Peabody has a grant called the McCarthy Foundation. And someone, actually one of my relatives, put some money in that fund and when they decommission buildings from being public use, they turn it into elderly housing. And all they do is use that money as seed money and then change it and apply for the grants and get the money to do the grants and the money is paid back to the foundation. Now, that's a good proposal, but it looks like just from looking what's happening over here, this building has been sitting too long and probably should be into demolition or into sale for $1 just to get a taxpayer base. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Just to point out obviously that your survey... I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Jeremy Mador, Old Farm Road, new to this as well. So, just to point out that the survey that others have mentioned, that the importance of filling it out and I fully agree with, this question is very simple in that it eliminates half of the survey question options. So, either you're for keeping the building and repurposing it or you're against keeping the building and repurposing it. It's very clear, black and white. So, the question is, how would you rank your survey answers and in what order and how many of those orders, or rather, in your priority list, include keeping a building? So, you're essentially helping our board get to a decision quicker instead of the tending and hugging that we've had for so many years. And frankly, I think we're all kind of tired of hearing about.
Thanks. Ms. Adams?
Just a couple of comments. One, it has gone out, request for proposal. I think many of the buildings have. There was no response at the time. And a senior housing path was heavily looked into sometime around 2009. There was a developer working on grants and whatnot. So, we've... We have exhausted the discussion of the building and a lot of things have been tried and we come back to trying to move forward. We just keep hypothesizing about what it could be. When we talk about selling it for a dollar and everybody who's followed this knows where I stand and it's not really a part of this, this is about, are we ready to say goodbye to the building or not? So, we understand how to move forward. No matter what, I think we really have to consider the value of this parcel as a piece of municipal land. If you sell it for a dollar, you're not selling a dilapidated building to a developer. You're selling 2.7 acres of beautiful historic land in the center of Lunenburg. And I mean, it's late, so I'm just going to say, what really got me focused on this piece of land is currently our gazebo is on a triangle surrounded by two of the fastest roads in the center of town with no parking, no ADA compliance, and no crosswalks. I go to tree lightings there in the dark, obviously with four children, band concerts in the summer. I see 2.7 acres of open space in the center of town as such a valuable thing to have, especially as we're almost 300 years old, where we can create a gazebo-style park with parking for all uses in the center of town. So, I don't like to go down the path of this could be a dollar building because we've got to talk about the land. I don't think it's $1 land. If so, I'll buy it.
Mr. McQuade?
Just a quick clarifying point about the question for, did it go out to RFP? And it did, but for a very minimal amount of time. And being heavily involved in that process, we were up against bringing something to Town Meeting, so we kind of rushed it, tried to get you guys an answer, didn't give it a lot of soak time. So, and I'd also point out that the Jones House went out for RFP twice before we got someone to take that one. So, to say that we exhausted all efforts is not true.
Thank you. Sir?
Steve Ashambo, 662 Page Street. I'd like to move the question.
Okay. Oh, Kathy Herrick said she wants to too. Okay, that cuts off debate, Mr. Leveque. Sorry. I know.
I had a motion on the floor.
What?
I had a motion on the floor, so...
You had a motion on the floor?
Yes, I moved to pass over this question.
Well, I was a seconded and I didn't hear you move to pass it over, so I guess...
That was what I...
So, now the debate is closed. It's a non-binding recommendation, Mr. Leveque.
Understood.
So, it's not binding. So, we're going to vote on it. So, all those in favor of demolishing the building, which is what is proposed in the article, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
You have your answer. Article 14.
The ayes have it.
It's non-binding. Article 14, somebody, please. These are two liquor articles and we've got 15 minutes before they close.
The irony here of me getting the articles I don't support. Although I think I did support this one. All right. I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to file a home rule petition with the General Court for a special act authorizing the town to grant an additional license for the sale of wines and malt beverages not to be drunk on the premises to Lanning Orchards with the language of the special act to be written as printed in the special meeting booklet.
Is there a second?
Second.
Selectman, your recommendation?
Selectman recommended this five to zero.
Thank you. And Finance Committee?
Finance Committee deferred. We're looking to see if there is any direct financial impact on the town.
Okay. Questions about a liquor license for Lannys? See if there's no one who are ready to vote. All those in favor of Article 14... Excuse me. Finance, now you'll need to give a recommendation.
We're going to assume that there is no direct financial impact other than the cost of the license since this is going to be purchased and taken off-premise. So, there's no additional income related to a restaurant, as a restaurant per se, so...
Thank you. All those in favor of Article 14, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Article 15, Mr. McQuade?
I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to file a home rule petition with the General Court for a special act authorizing the town to grant an additional license for the sale of wines and malt beverages not to be drunk on the premises in addition to the home rule petition authorized by the preceding Article 14 with the language of the special act to be written as printed in the special Town Meeting booklet.
Is there a second?
Second.
Selectman, your recommendation?
Recommend approval four to one.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee deferred for the same reason as the previous article and unless there is a presentation, I'm going to assume that we're going to find no recommendation.
Okay. Anyone have any questions about Article 15? Sorry. Yes, Mr. Jeffries?
So, this article is presented, there are, to point out, no requests for additional liquor licenses in our town. Clearly, I think it's clear that if anyone wants a liquor license, that they can come before Town Meeting and request one as Lanning Orchards did and be granted one. So, I would urge that without... In the absence of a need for this, that we deny it.
Anyone else on Article 15? Mr. Alonso?
All this article does is give us a liquor license so that we wouldn't have to go through a special petition with the General Court again to have a liquor license that's available for off-premises in case one would come up. It does nothing more than that. I would urge that people vote for it.
Okay. I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor of Article 15, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
It passes and we have concluded our business.